If you ever do that, you can't see anything. You're sitting there staring at a blank screen.
Really?
Yeah, so you just listen. Yeah, I thought maybe.
That's okay. I was like, I just want to check this thing off my list and move it on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was calling.
Yeah.
He has some lip cream spray on.
Good evening.
Yeah.
How goes it?
I want to know how you eat ice cream.
Aw, man.
Cause I saw you coming out of that ice cream shop.
Let me take you there. There's nothing I can't do with ice cream. When I come to my kids and me and I, it's amazing. I like their favorite. So have no fury.
I was at the orange theory inside. Standing there. Someone would crush you by coming out of the ice cream shop. Now I'm just out of the ice cream shop.
So when you look at me, it's like I'm probably working out all the time. I've got a metabolism like. So we're. We've been hitting up a lot of ice cream desks and doing a lot of ice. What if you think?
What I can do.
It's kind of like a rat. Cause I don't like without.
I made that up, but I forget somewhere.
I'm gonna use it.
There you go.
Ashley. Well, I thought I did. All right, guys, I want to welcome you to the regularly scheduled council meeting of the Spring Hill Governing Body on July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you all for being here, and we do not have a pastor available today, so I'll go ahead and say the invocation if you guys wouldn't mind standing with me if you're able. Father God, I thank you for this day. Thank you for another day to serve you, God, and to serve our community, God. Help us to do it with, um, with intelligence, God, and compassion and wisdom, God, and just help us to guide every, every step that we make. Help us to make the best decisions for each one of our citizens, God. Thank you for it in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, Councilman Young is feeling a little under the weather, so he is calling in, so he should be on the call with us. Mr. Young, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, great.
All right, thank you, sir. With that, Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. Roth?
Here.
Mr. Peel?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mrs. North?
Here.
Mr. Van Houdon?
Here.
Mayor, we do have a quorum present.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Um, we have had the request to add two additional executive sessions. Um, are there any other requested changes or additions onto there? If not, I entertain a motion to approve agenda as amended.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero zero. Next, we'll move on to the citizen participation period. At this point, if you could, uh, step up to the microphone and state your name and your address. And, uh, just one point of clarification, if you can make sure and speak into the microphone, would you have people watching online? And we've had, had a few people reach out and say that they've been unable to hear a few of the comments due to not being close enough to the microphone. So if you wouldn't, wouldn't mind doing that, that'd be great. And the first person we have on the list is Mr. Bill Peterman. You never let us down, Bill.
Thank you, guys. I just wanted to see where we're at on the sewer line going from Bucyrus to, uh, Spring Hill. Uh, how things were looking on that because I got a feeling that, uh, and it's just my opinion, uh, that, uh, soon as the sewers get in, the warehouse people are going to jump right in there. And I don't see many, uh, homes going in after the, uh, warehouses go in. I warehouses have ruined it for a lot of people to the east or to the west of us. And I got a feeling that that's what's going to happen there. They're going to wait until we spend our tax dollars to help and put that sewer line in. And then, uh, they're going to jump in and put warehouses all along two hundred and twenty-third street. And the homes will not come. So we're going to pay for what people around here don't want. My opinion.
Well, I don't say too many things publicly, but I will say this. Um, I mean, myself personally, I have no appetite for any warehouses in, in this area. And I think for the most part, I would say the governing body probably echoes that. Um, I know a lot of communities have done that around here, but I know we, we don't particularly have any appetite for big warehouses around here. So that's all I'll say on that.
Can I clarify something?
Yes.
I don't believe that was being funded by Spring Hill tax dollars, was it? Wasn't that something that Bucyrus was coordinating?
Coordinating, yeah, we haven't agreed on, we haven't agreed on any fun funding yet. The hope is to not have to fund, fund any of it on our part.
Mr. Peterman was making is that our tax dollars were paying for that, and that has not been decided or confirmed.
Right, the city has not committed any money to it. Correct. Next on the list, we have Mr. Roy Riffle.
I'll go ahead and state my name and address. Roy Riffle, two zero zero two four Barker Street.
Do we need to do that? Oh, there we go.
Hey, we worked. Thank you. I appreciate it. Um, last, yep, I can give, thank you. Uh, last January, I had sent the governing body that was in the seat at the time of January twenty-sixth an email regarding our charter ordinances. And I'd also reached out to our Attorney General's Office, our Secretary of State's Office, and our, um, County Election Office. And all of them had referred me to our governing body and our city attorney. So that is exactly what I did. And I talked about several things in there regarding the, the term of a, of an appointed mayor, appointments, and the council president process. Um, and I never received a response back. Um, tonight, since we're making an appointment, I thought it would be good for me to share my, my email and share my homework for it. And, but I'm only going to spec, uh, talk about the term, uh, or I'm sorry, about the appointments. At our charter ordinances, we have nine, um, total charter ordinances that explain that process. Of that, only three remain standing. Um, one was amended, which is, um, replaced by number thirty-six. So in twenty-six, um, is the one that is amended, I'm sorry, uh, the one is that is amended. And you can see the only parts that remain is to talk about the exemption, um, and the, uh, repealing of ordinance number twenty, and also the effective date of that one. So then that takes you to, um, charter ordinance twenty-six or twenty-eight, which now stands, um, which then talks about the president of the council and the election duties, which, uh, reads, "The city council at its regular meeting following any city election, elect one of its members of the president of the council. When any vacancy shall happen in the office of mayor, the president of the council for the time being shall exercise the office of mayor in all the rights, privileges, and jurisdiction of the mayor other than the appointments or appointment of officers and employees until such a vacancy be filled at the next city election or until such disability be removed, or in the case of a temporary absence, the mayor, um, shall return." And then you go on to number thirty, which is a, a total unrelated, um, basically moving, um, the election from the spring to the fall. And then, um, you get to thirty-six, which is the very last ordinance that talks about this process. And in that process, then it clarifies on the very first part, moving the, everybody's terms with all of that, uh, movement from the spring to the fall. And then, um, it gives some other issues related to my email, um, but at the very last part, uh, number seven, it states that, um, uh, Kansas State statute states at the regular meeting, following any city election, elect one of its members as president of the council. When any vacancy shall happen in the office of mayor, the president of the council for the time being shall exercise the office of mayor in all rights, privileges, jurisdiction of the mayor other than the appointment of officers and employees until such vacancy be filled at the next city council meeting, or I'm sorry, at the next city election, or until the disability removal in the case of a temporary absence, um, to, the, until the mayor shall return. And then in section nine, it talks about how you can't have an interpretation of, of doing something different, um, and that you have to follow this, uh, ordinance as it is severable. And that only a valid judgment and degree of any court or competent jurisdiction can make it considered unconstitutional. And then lastly, um, when the, the state statutes that get referred to in there, um, it talks about how the, um, you become the mayor, and it says in there, oops, I got the wrong page. I apologize. Um, it says in there that one of them is when qualifying, um, for that position. For some reason, I can't find that, that document that I had. So anyways, I, um, um, oh, there it is. I'm sorry. Um, it talks about there, like, one of the examples is refusal to qualify, um, gives you to put into the mayor position until the next city election. And so, like I said, I've, I've reached out to other places and they referred me to my governing body and our city attorney. And which I did, um, did not receive a response, sent a follow-up email, and continued to not receive a response back in January. Let it all be. Saw that there's appointment. As I stated in my email, I feel that it places our city on a, a severe liability, and we're trusting that of our city attorney and not doing our own homework. And so I wanted to share the homework of the charter ordinances and leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, is there anyone else that would like to step up and say anything? If not, with that, we'll go ahead and close the citizen participation period, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. And I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries five zero zero. Next, we'll move on to formal council action. First item on the agenda is consider the appointment of finance director. Um, after a large number of applicants, I'm pleased to announce, um, my candidate in consideration for appointment. Um, she has over thirty years in the financial institution, uh, financial industry, I'm, I'm sorry about that, and many years on city and council government, um, as far as a financial employee. And I think she's very well qualified for the job, and she made it through our, uh, rigorous, rigorous interviews, multiple different interviews. And, uh, so at this time, I'd ask, I'd like to ask Ms. Rhonda Dunn to come forward. And if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask her, and then we'll take a vote. Welcome.
Thank you. I assume this is a spot?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions, and I'm.
And I know we're kind of putting you on the spot.
No, that's okay.
If you guys have any questions or comments or anything before.
Could, um, could you just give us in the public a brief overview of, of the experience that you're bringing to Spring Hill?
Absolutely. I, um, started out, I have a bachelor's degree in accounting and an MBA. I went to Pittsburgh State University and then the University of Tulsa. I spent seventeen years working for big oil in a lot of different positions from accounting, pricing. I wouldn't want to be doing that job today, but pricing fuel, um, as well as budgeting and planning and new product development, a lot of interesting things in sales. I've had a lot of great opportunities. I chose to come back to Kansas to my home to live, and I went to work for my family business, a small business. So I've had a variety from, you know, huge Fortune Five companies to the business that gets planned around the dinner table. And I then went on to be an elected official as the Bourbon County Treasurer. I moved to the city of Fort Scott, where I served first in code enforcement and community development, and then I was finance director. And I have worked more than thirty years, um, doing a wide variety of things, including experience with, um, municipal, municipal municipalities, and I look forward to applying that here.
Great answer.
Good.
We're excited to have you. We're excited to have you.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I appreciate the experience that you have.
Good. I look forward to it. I, when I looked at my resume, I had a job at a ranch that ended. I was their CFO. And I looked at my resume and I thought about, okay, what's my next step? And this, I'll be honest, community service, public service, and most specifically in a city is the job I've enjoyed the most. And so, that's what made me go down this path and why I've worked to get this position.
These are recorded, so those comments.
Okay.
And I'll just say, I had the chance to speak with Mrs. Dunn. And I was very impressed with her knowledge and experience and her ideas going forward. So, I'm excited to have her on board also.
Thank you.
There's no further questions or comments. I entertain a motion.
I move to approve Mayor Berkey's appointment of Ms. Rhonda Dunn as finance director.
Second?
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries five zero zero. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Appreciate that vote of confidence. Look forward to it.
And her official day will, our start day will be tomorrow. So, we'll do the swearing-in ceremony at that point tomorrow. Thank you.
Starting on a Friday.
All right. Next item on the agenda is consider ordinance number twenty-two-two dash twenty-five, authorizing the issuance and delivery of three million, twenty-five thousand dollars, principal amount of general obligation bonds, series twenty-two-two A of the Spring, City of Spring Hill, Kansas, and providing for the levy and collection of annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on the bonds as they become due. Ms. Armstrong and Mr. Ellsworth, whoever wants to take the floor from twenty-two of you.
I will give a brief introduction. And then we will have Mr. Tyler Ellsworth and Ben Hart. Tyler is our bond counsel and Ben Hart is our financial advisor. On the bond sale, a couple of things I wanted to point out is we did receive a premium. So, the new amount of the bonds is two million, nine hundred and five thousand dollars. And just as a reminder, these are for the Hundred and Ninety-Ninth Street and Ridgeview Road Roundabout. That's eight hundred and ten thousand dollars. And the Dayton Creek Special Benefit District was two million, ninety-five thousand dollars. And the Dayton Creek Special Benefit District is payable through special assessments. And Tyler and Ben, if you'd like to come up, answer any questions or?
I think the last time I saw you guys, I had a cast on my leg. So, it's good to be back without a cast. We took bids this morning, like Luann said, at eleven o'clock. We received six bids, which is four more than what we've seen in the last three weeks on other clients. So, really good to see that. The rates in the last few weeks have been going down steadily, kind of like the gas prices. Not fast enough, but they're going down in the right direction. So, the bids were between three point five eight percent and three point three six eight percent. Kind of a narrow margin. So, what we do is look at the treasuries for twenty years, and it's right on the money. It's around three point three four was the treasuries as of yesterday. So, the bids came in right what we expected them to. I mean, given what we knew yesterday. So, what you've got is a fairly competitive sale today. And the winning bidder, the lowest bid, would be Country Club Bank, a local bank. So, that would be our recommendation for approval.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tyler Ellsworth with Q-Tech Rock. And I'm joined actually this evening by my colleague Curtis Kane, who's been assisting on this preparation of the bond docs. I don't have much to add to what Luann and Ben provided in terms of the sale results today. I would just note that on your agenda and for your official action this evening, we have two separate items. One is a bond ordinance, which needs to be considered and approved first, followed by the bond resolution. So, two separate agenda items, two separate sets of votes on these. And if there are any questions about the proceedings, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments?
Is the actual amount is two million, nine hundred and five thousand? That's correct?
Yes.
Okay. The, the agenda on the computer has a different number. I just wanted to make sure we got the right one.
Yep, yep.
That was the original number, I believe.
Right, that was the early, and it probably shifted as you did your bids this morning and everything.
Yes.
Real-time updates.
If there are no further questions or comments, I entertain a motion. And I actually believe this is a rule call. So, Madam Clerk, if you could take the roll.
I need a motion.
Yeah, I need a motion. That's, I'm sorry. Go.
I move to adopt ordinance number twenty-two-two dash twenty-five, authorizing the issuance and delivery of two million, nine hundred and five thousand dollars, principal amount of general obligation bonds, series two zero two-two A of the City of Spring Hill, Kansas, and providing for the levy and collection of annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on the bonds as they become due.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, now, Madam Clerk, please.
Mrs. North?
Yes.
Mr. Van Houden?
Yes.
Mrs. Roth?
Yes.
Mr. Peel?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
The tally vote is five zero zero.
Thank you very much. Motion carries five zero zero. Next item on the agenda is consider resolution number twenty-two-two dash R dash thirteen, prescribing the form and details of authorizing the delivery of, this amount should change, correct? So, that should be the two million, yeah, so two million, nine hundred and five thousand dollars, principal amount of general obligations bonds, series twenty-two-two A of the Spring Hill, City of Spring Hill, Kansas, previously authorized by the ordinance of the city. And you guys also still have the floor.
Yep, nothing to add.
Nothing to add? I don't assume there are any other further questions or comments?
I meant to bring this up last time. I didn't bring it up for the ordinance. But just as clarity, we did this combined just to get better rates, right? That's why we went ahead and did this together?
That's correct.
Yeah. Just want to make sure people know that's why we have them together, even though they're two pretty separate things.
No further questions or comments. I entertain a motion.
I move to adopt resolution number twenty-two-two R thirteen, prescribing the form and details of and authorizing the delivery of two million, nine hundred and five thousand dollars, principal amount of general obligation bonds, series twenty-two-two Alpha of the City of Spring Hill, Kansas, previously authorized by an ordinance of the city.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries five zero zero. Thank you, guys. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of funding agreement with Ad Astra Land Holdings LLC and Spring Hill Venture LLC for Wiswell Farm Project. And Ms. Armstrong and Mr. Ellsworth, you have the floor.
Okay, this item is a funding agreement with Ad Astra Land Holdings.
Hey, Ms. Armstrong, could you move to the microphone just a little?
Yes, sir.
There you go. Thank you.
Ad Astra Hold, Land Holdings in Spring Hill and city staff have met to discuss potential financial incentives for economic development project currently identified as a Wiswell Farms project. To consider the applicant's request, the city must retain outside counsel and consultants. This causes expenses to be incurred. The city is requesting a funding agreement with the developer that will allow the city to request a deposit from the developer to cover the cost. The initial recommended deposit is twenty thousand dollars. And once approved, the applicant will provide a check to the city for the deposit into the project account. I don't know if Tyler has any more to add to that?
I think the only thing to add to that is that entering this funding agreement doesn't commit the city to anything. It doesn't say that the city is agreeing to provide any of the incentives that have been requested. Really, entering this agreement is, as Mrs. Armstrong said, just for the city's benefit so that the city can be reimbursed for the costs it's incurring in analyzing the developer's request.
Right. And it doesn't commit the city to any money either.
Correct.
It's a first step.
Correct.
And they're fronting the money to us.
They are.
Okay.
Do we have any reason or inkling that there may be additional funds exceeding this twenty thousand dollars that maybe the city would be responsible for? Or then that would be another negotiation between the two parties?
That's a very good question. The agreement provides that the developer's team will make an initial twenty thousand dollar deposit. But city staff monitors how that deposit is drawn down. And if it looks like that deposit is getting short, they can request additional funds from the developer under this same agreement. And the developer keeps paying for amounts in excess of that twenty thousand dollars.
So, should we get there, we just come back to the table?
That's right. And really, we don't even have to come back to the table. We just have to ask them to replenish the deposit.
The request?
That's right. At which point, they should do that. And they're entitled to reasonable documentation of the city's costs. But it's, it's a cooperative agreement.
Sure.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments?
I think that shows a lot of good faith from.
The developer.
Yeah.
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 That they're very willing to be cooperative and do right.
Well, and to me, it also shows that they believe in what they're doing enough that they're willing to fork the money out right out, right out of the gate to say, hey, we, we think this is gonna be successful. And we're willing to put our own money on the line to.
We like good partners. And this is a good sign of good partnership.
Yep.
All right. If there are no, no other questions or comments, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve the funding agreement with Ad Astra Land Holdings LLC and Spring Hill Venture LLC.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero zero. Thank you, guys. Next item on the agenda is consider the approval of appropriation order number twenty-two-two dash zero seven dash fourteen. We don't have a presentation on this one, but feel free to ask any questions if you have. This is kind of just a general appropriation order that we have consistently. We should all have that in our packets. If anybody has any questions or comments on that, I'm sure Ms. Armstrong would be able to answer that if you do. If not, no further questions or comments. I entertain a motion.
I move to approve appropriation order number twenty-two-two dash seven dash fourteen.
Second?
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll on that one?
Mrs. Roth?
Yes, with the exception that I abstain from any invoices pertaining to J and T Auto Service.
Mr. Peel?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. North?
Yes.
Mr. Van Houden?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero zero with the exception stated by Councilwoman Roth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of bid for Veterans Park Memorial Plaza and Fishing Jetties. And Mr. Messer, you have the floor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I also have Larry Reynolds from V R O here to help answer questions on this project. This project's been a long time coming. It's the next phase of the Veterans Like Project, including two jetties. The bids were opened. The project estimate was five hundred and forty-seven thousand. The alternate was ninety-five. The alternate is the sidewalks on the back that tie into the trail. Only one company showed up at the pre-bid and bid it. And their base bid is nine hundred and seven, one fifty. And with the bid alternate of thirty-four thousand, two ninety, I think that's, I can't do the math in my head, but substantially higher than what the engineering's estimate. So, staff looked at several, I mean, and Larry can answer questions more on the bidding process or any questions you might have on that. But it's pretty much the standard plans that have been circulating. There was nothing, no huge surprises to it. It's a little bit of a downsize from what was envisioned. So, there'll be another phase further on. We felt the alternatives were, we could reject the base bid and the alternate, saying they were too high above the engineer's estimate because it's quite a bit higher.
Almost double.
I know with the market, the construction market and the appetite, it's not a hungry market. It's pretty much a tough market to bid anything right now. But we, one of the step, one of the alternatives was reject it and return it to the staff for further study, see what we can do. Another, another alternative was reject the base bid and the alternate, but have V R O negotiate with the company, see if we could get the jetties at a reasonable cost and at least proceed with that. Another one is to accept the bid. The fourth altern, I had five alternatives. And I quite honestly, I'm not, I am, I am gonna make a recommendation. But two or three of the others are just as attractive in my mind as the one I was gonna recommend. Re-bid the project and try to increase the exposure, more advertising, maybe a longer length of time to try to get more than one bidder. And the fifth alternative I put was re-bid at some, postpone it, rebuild, rebid it at some time in the future, maybe when construction is more, is not as in demand as it is right now. It's just, it's just crazy being the way it's driven. The recommendation, staff recommendation would be to reject the base bid and the alternate bid and return the project for further study and see what we can do. But then again, like I said, it's, this is a tough one. It could go either way. We could do one with the jetties. I felt it was your decision to tell us which direction to go because some of the alternatives are so close to each other.
Well, I know, speaking for myself, I mean, this is kind of a project that's near and dear to my heart. I mean, it's called Veterans Park for crying out loud. And we don't have anything for veterans out there right now. And it haven't for several years. And so, I, me personally, I don't think it's something that I want to put off for several more years because it's already been put off for several years now. But I don't think we should pay double of what we estimate it should cost and take to do it. So, my personal opinion would be to send it back. And like you said, maybe give a little more timeframe and try to get a few more bids on it. Don't know if we'll get anything or not, but at least try to get something that's a little bit more competitive, something that's at least, you know, I, I expected it to maybe be a little bit over what we estimated, but not, you know.
Quite honestly.
Five hundred grand over what we estimate.
Yeah. And Larry can speak to this if he would like to. But I know he was, in his bid, he was accounting for the increased concrete and the increase when it got, I think, before things went crazy six months ago, eight months ago. This engineer's estimate probably would have come in around four hundred. So, it is considerably higher. We could, since we do have donations sitting there waiting for us to take action on the jetties. Like I said, that was an alternative. I'm not married to any of the four other than I agree, it's just, I can't see it being that much higher than the engineer's estimate.
Yeah. And I definitely don't want to put it off for another six months or a year or longer. I would, I think sooner than later, I would like us to move on it pretty quickly. But, you know, not at the tune of, you know, almost double the amount.
So, the alternative options, could you list those again?
Pardon?
The alternative option, so, so the whole kit and caboodle was estimated to be five hundred thousand.
Five hundred and forty-seven thousand.
The whole thing.
The whole thing. Jetties and?
Double, essentially, nine hundred thousand.
Yes, almost a million.
So, you're saying, send it all back and wait? Or you're suggesting to send it all back?
In my opinion, the two big questions we have is send it back, look at it.
In its entirety.
Get some, or separate off the jetties. Those are the two primary choices I see.
So, if you separate the jetties, then it's not like that's a fifty percent split in the cost, right? Now, the, what, what, what do you think of the jetties or, do you have that itemized?
I, I do, but I hate to say that number because your bidders are listening. And, but I, I think, let's put it this way. I think we have donations of close to a hundred thousand for it.
That's fair enough.
And the jetties, another little kicker for the jetties is we would have to do that in the winter.
Sure.
Because we would drain the water down. We could have to lower the lake down enough we can work in there. So, that's a little bit down the road anyway. But at some future time, or we could, when we do further study, we could bring that option back and say, can we do that? But I almost would say return it to V R O. Can we do that? It's, but I almost would say return it to V R O and staff and. Look it over and see what we could come back with.
And we can return it and separate it out too, just have the jetties, one have the other and then put them both out to bid. And then if, well, let's say it comes back the same on on the main portion, but we get a good or reasonable price on the jetties, we could go ahead and do that and.
Yes.
Wait, I mean, it's not ideal, but.
What was the scope on the alternate? What was the alternate for?
The olden, it's just this, the um.
Sidewalk.
The sidewalk?
The sidewalk back, and I asked for that to be an alternate instead of being tied into the project because of the. Feedback we got from the Parks Advisory Board and the American Legion about the possibility. Of doing bricks or something to recognize the veterans. And so I said, let's make that as an alternate so we can. Have a little bit more time to study those options into there. So I ask it to be rolled into an alternate. To study it a little bit while we were uh, getting. I mean, it wasn't mainly to cut costs, it was mainly to try to listen to these groups. I've been to their meetings and have been talking to them. And I think that point um. Wasn't missed, but it was different ideas have come forward.
And they had some great ideas when they came here and presented to us. They had some great ideas.
Um, I mean. I I don't think there's any way we can approve this the way it sits right now, uh, with the bid that we got. Um, you know, we put it out to bid. Because it's supposed to be competitive bid process to drive the cost down, to make the contractors compete for good prices. And one bid is not a competitive bid process, so um.
Now, had they come in at like six hundred thousand.
I mean, it would, it might be considerable. Yeah, thi- this is, to me is not competitive, um, so we're not getting. The bit, the process is not providing us with what we really wanna get out of it. Um. I I, we don't need to delay this a lot longer or significantly longer, cause quite frankly, we. We really should have had this project underway or close to completion at this point already. I know that there's. A hundred thousand dollars of a personal donation that's included with this that I think also increases the urgency with needing to get it. Completed and done, um, but I think we have to be financially responsible with it too, and we can't do it this way. Larry, I'd I'd love to hear your feedback about what you think, um.
Absolutely.
You know, if. If we feel like bidding this again could be beneficial, or um, just just kinda give us some of your general thoughts on where to go.
Uh, certainly I think it could. One one bid is is not terribly competitive, um. It's a matter of time and judging the market, you know, and when's the right time. Um, this is typical of. Other projects we've had that have come in and bid lately. Um, so it's it's something we're seeing throughout the industry. How much time? It's hard to say. Uh, should you wait and decide to do that? Um, or go right back out? I mean, we just went out and only got one bid. Um, breaking it out um, to get a better price on the items separately. Might, might work, um, but again, it's, you know, it's tough to say.
Do you think there's anything within the bid that would be. A red flag for a contractor or would be concerning or anything that might be contributing to driving the price up outside of. Just cost of goods and inflation and all, the every, the other things that are driving the price up on everything right now.
Yeah, there's no one or two big things. Uh, there's some little things here and there that I think are uh, driving some of it, but not. There's no big red flags that say this is why.
This is the thing that's the problem.
I, I think personally, just being in the construction field, I think there's just such a high demand for construction right now that they just. I'm not saying that they did this, but some companies just throw a number, a pretty high number out there and say, hey, if we get it, we get it. If we don't get it, we don't need it. You know, we have all this other stuff going on.
Agreed.
I mean, it's it's almost like it's a throwaway bid, which is what you're talking about to where. They have to have a certain price in order for it to be worth it to them. Uh, typically you see it on smaller projects from really, really big construction companies. That it, that they drive the price up higher, cause it really, that's what makes it worth it for them to do it.
Sure.
Um, and the idea is hopefully you can find some other ones that are, that some smaller ones that are willing to come in at a more reasonable price. So, yeah, um. I I mean, my stance is gonna be that we're, uh, we, I I'm not gonna vote in favor to approve it tonight, but we. We need to have some kind of plan of how to keep this moving. It can't just sit idle, so.
Yeah, it's it's got pushed to the back burner for several years and I think it needs to be. Needs to be moved, moved along pretty quickly, but add a economical price for for the city and for the community.
So, I mean, I I'd be open to the idea of splitting it up into two different bids if we could separate it and. Maybe that could be helpful. Um, like you said, I don't know when the right time is. It's it's, it's literally guesswork. So if if we're looking at guesswork on timing, I think we should get it back out to bid as quickly as possible. Um, i- if we wanna try and break it down and separate it, um, I don't know how long we had it out for the first time. If we wanna try an extra week or something like that. Um, maybe we'll have better results.
Maybe try to advertise a little bit better, try to get the word out there a little bit better. That's not my, that's not my field, but whoever, whoever's in charge of that, I think, you know.
If, come and chime in here. If if we send it back to the staff to look at it, can we ask them? Hey, by the next meeting, or I guess you can tell us, uh, Mister Messer, how quickly it can turn around, but. Different ways to break it up, to maybe make it more attractive to bidders. So that, you know, they can kinda decide that over the next couple of weeks and then we can come back to it and get it back out in the bid process fairly quickly.
Yeah, I'll meet with uh, Larry. We'll talk about it tomorrow and or Monday and we'll figure out a game plan and get. And tell you in the next meeting what we're doing and what we're trying to move. I agree, it needs to move forward. It can't stagnate, but. I think maybe too, I I don't know, maybe this is crazy, maybe when people see this bid came in ridiculously high that. They'll be interested in bidding and bring in some bids, but right now it's not a. The contractors, I I would say are not as hungry as normal because. There is so much work out there and every contractor is built to the max, so. I I hope it is, maybe some people will take note, hey, we can do it for a lot less than that. If they clean or do some modification, we'll look at the bid, see if we can do anything to make it more appealing. Or to clean it up in any way and then uh, put it back out, maybe try to even advertise wider. And maybe even a little bit longer time. We'll work at some plans and bring it back to the next meeting. I I don't want it to stagnate either. I promised some people it wouldn't. Um, I like I said, I've been going, I went to American Legion, got their ideas. And I promised them it wouldn't die and I'm not gonna let it die.
Yeah, yeah, and I think it's our responsibility to community and to the people that donated, you know, donated the money for the funds, not to just sit there and, you know.
And one of the things that we, you know, considered in putting the jetties and the memorial together was making it a little bit more attractive package.
Bigger job.
Going out, bigger job, uh, extend it out over a little bit more time, uh, so.
And you guys are the experts, so if you think it would be better to keep them together, we have more draw if we keep them together rather than splitting it up, you know, I'll leave that up to you guys on.
Yeah, I I wouldn't be opposed to keeping it the same and just rebidding it, you know, but there's, there's just no way we can do it like this.
Alright.
The only, the only other thing I was gonna say on that is, of course, a bigger job might be more appealing for a contractor, but. As well as sometimes smaller jobs are more, as we've seen in streets, like if it's a small enough job, like. Oh, we can squeeze that in in between these other bigger jobs, so that could also be appealing. So I don't know if it's possible to tell, you know, put out in the bid, like. You can bid separately, you can bid together, like let them bid it however they want, and maybe that would help them fit their busy schedules. However, it it works with them. Just a thought. But I'm not in the construction industry.
Yeah, well, and it could, some of it could be the timing too, you know, we're right in the busiest time for construction is right now. You know, whereas you hit it early spring or hit it late.
The jetties have to be done in the winter.
Right.
It might.
So.
So.
Was there a timeframe on this bid to the uh, public? Like, was there any indication on here of this is the timeline we'd like to see this done? Do you think that that's maybe the possibility why people weren't bidding it because they just said, well, we don't even have room on our schedule?
Yeah, we'd extend it out the final completion of everything to March.
Okay.
Uh, we had some milestones in there that we wanted to hit uh, for the memorial. Um, that was a little bit aggressive, but um, it's something we would work with.
Well, and again, I agree that we don't want to push it back, but if, you know, timeline is what's preventing people from participating, then maybe we could be flexible. Especially if that brings that number down into our range.
So I guess we're back to the recommendation, staff recommends rejecting a base bid and alternate. Project returned to staff for further study and possible rebid. I guess you guys had to vote on that.
So we gotta do a a motion to reject the bid and then do we need to include?
Probably include.
What to do a- at that point with it?
Probably, but so.
Return for rebid?
Yeah, for rebid. And with with what we've talked about, with extending the period out longer and, you know, advertising a little better and.
So I would make a motion to reject the base and alternate bid, uh, because of too high of a price. Uh, with the. Direction to the staff to rebid this at some point in the future and reevaluate. Um, if we bid the project as a whole or in pieces. Should we say that we wanna try to get an answer on that by next meeting so that we can vote on it? I I would like to, I I would request to some kind of additional information or update as to how it's progressed in the two weeks. So, is that, is that workable?
Perfect.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and second, is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Motion carries five zero zero. Thank you, guys. Next item on the agenda is consider approval of bid for bar screen repair at the wastewater plant and Mister Messer, you still have the floor.
In the wastewater field, the first step of the wastewater treatment is what's called a bar screen. And I sent some pictures and some information. Basically, it's a comb. It combs through the sewage and pulls out. Large objects or stuff that will not be broken down by the process. Our first, it's the first step, well, the influent pumps pump it to there, that's the first step, but actually this is the first part of the treatment. We have a machine there that is called a bar screen and it has failed. Uh, it's got a upper and a lower unit. These rags are dragged up, washed off, dumped into a bucket. The bucket is dumped into a dumpster and hauled away. It has failed. We had a, we knew it was failing. It was partially working. We had an EPA. And K D H E inspection not long ago and they uh, pretty much gave us a deadline to fix it. It's a required. Part of the operation. Uh, it's about twenty years old. Uh, we looked at several options. The first option was repairing it. We had uh, three specialists. I mean, it's a specialized piece of equipment. We brought three companies in. Two of them said, it can't be repaired. You're you're throwing good money after bad. The third one said, oh, we'll pull it apart and then we'll give you a bid, which to me is saying the same thing. So unfortunately, it's a very expensive item. I don't think it can be repaired and I, the alternatives we rep. Okay, we looked at two things. One is to repair the bar screen with the same brand. Model number, mainly to be able to take that one out and put the other one right in. We don't have to modify. It's not wider, shorter, cause they, they're, it's like putting a Chevy engine in a Ford, there's modifications if you try to do that. Um, so we did look at other brands, but we felt the. Most desirable would be to put it, put back the same type of unit or same brand that fits right in there. It's gonna be quicker. Uh, cause it's gonna be difficult to have this piece of equipment out. It's working halfway. Now, basically, I keep calling it a comb, but these ears come up and they drag the rags up. Well, they're doing this now. They're barely and they're not catching anything. We could replace the unit with the same model, um, and of Enviroline quoted at two hundred ninety-eight. Thousand nine hundred installed and that's all the work removal. Uh, J C I, a second company, quoted a different piece of equipment. And it's a little bit less, but uh, we felt that the modifications would end up costing about the same. Uh, we could ignore it and continue to operate it and, but we're facing fines and EPA has given us a six month deadline. In fact, tomorrow I'll be sending them an email with what was determined because they are demanding a timeline for what us, us to do something. Uh, we could gamble and accept the seventy-four thousand, nine hundred eighty-five dollar. Bid to take it apart and then give us an estimate, but I'm afraid if we do that and then they say you gotta replace it, now we're up to. Two hundred ninety-eight thousand plus seventy-five thousand, so I wasn't crazy about that. Another option is reject all and return it to staff and we can continue to try to find an option. But staff recommends accepting the Enviroline bid for in-kind replacement, the two hundred ninety-eight thousand nine hundred.
I think it sounds like a good idea to replace it with the Enviroline, um, because it's the same type of equipment.
It'll's right in there.
It's it's most expensive, but it has served its time of twenty years and. It it wouldn't do any good just to repair it, I don't believe either.
And seventy-five thousand dollars is a big chunk to throw at a maybe.
Yeah, and it says right in their bid, then we'll give you a bid. Um, that worried me.
If there's two that are not even willing to repair it, essentially, I don't know that a repair is a good idea at all.
Yeah, two companies flat out said there, it's not repairable. The problem is, most of the stuff is buried in the sewage flow. So even to pull it out is gonna cost. But the ones who looked at it, evaluated it and they're.
What's uh, with the replacement, what kinda lifespan do you think we will get out of it?
That's a tricky question because I wasn't here.
Be- best guess.
Uh, I would say easily twenty, twenty-five years. Yeah, easily, but if we do a better job of maintenance. Um, that's where I'm saying it's a tricky question. I don't know what was done in the past, but looking at it, I think. Trying to be polite as I can. We could've done a better job, yes.
If we do a good job with it, how?
I think we can get up to thirty years. I've seen in other plants that happen. I I worked in one plant that I swear the thing was built in eighteen hundreds. It was so rickety, but it's still working.
What about, uh? You talked about the replacing with the same model so that it fits right in, your installation is easier, quicker.
Yes.
Less downtime. Um. What are your timeline wise, like with downtime, like is is this a two day fix, a three day fix, a three hour fix? What do you think?
Twelve weeks to get the piece of equipment. I would say to take it in and put it out, once they get it on site, it should be several days is all.
For install?
Yes.
Okay, and how does that affect how the the treatment that we still need to keep going?
Okay, the way it's set up is you have your mechanical bar screen. And you have the really old fashioned, just bars. It has to be raked all day long. You have to go out there and use a rake, so we will, that's our, it's called the diversion that happens when the power goes out or. Uh, for some reason that machine needs maintenance, so all we'll be doing is diverting it to the old fashioned hand raking.
Gotcha.
Very nasty hateful job, but we'll do it for three or four days.
And takes more labor, but you do it for a few days to get the repair made and then everything goes back the way it's supposed to be.
Yeah, because if you don't do it, I mean, if you don't keep it up there, you're out there every hour doing it. When you do that, it. It starts backing the flow up and you can't keep it off the people working, so.
So we hope that employees don't call in that day.
Yeah, it's a. It's a pretty, uh, we are seeing more and more equipment starting to fail. The plant is what, twenty-two years old? And hopefully, I mean, what do we replace this, like, since I've been here, uh. Two influent pumps and one dig- digester pump, so the stuff is beginning to fail and we do have proposals. To rebuild some of the blowers before they fail. Uh, before I got here, you did. Three hundred eighty-six thousand dollar clarifier rebuilt with the aerator, so. The plant's getting the upkeep it needs with the new modifications, but we have to. Ensure we're doing everything we can with maintenance records and everything else to make sure we get the most we can from them.
Um, and Ms. Armstrong, you might be able to answer this better. Um and Ms. Armstrong, you might be able to answer this better, but where where are we proposing this funds come from, is it coming from the sewer fund? I assume so, but I just wanna make sure.
Uh last question, if if we went with the less expensive route. That doesn't fit right in, the installation is not the right fit. That's gonna require additional modification, specialized work. Additional cost in order to get all that done. Is it reasonable that that could be in the thirty thousand dollar range, you know, so if we?
I would think it would be in there, but.
I mean.
It's an unknown.
I I I'm try- I'm trying to kinda balance, you know, that unknown last piece of that other option, if it, you know. If it came in a couple of thousand dollars, I think that's, you know, pretty much a wash, but if it's gonna save us ten, twelve, fifteen, I think that's. Worth consideration, so I guess it's more of a, do we?
Another thing about that unit, and I I did not follow up, but I believe it would be a tough fit because it's quite a bit taller. I didn't go put a tape measure on it, but when I did some research on it, I don't know that the one they bid would fit, it would barely fit if it did. Cause it's quite a bit taller.
And probably longer install time.
Yeah, I was gonna say, probably a lot longer downtime.
We're gonna have to modify some of the stuff overhead because it's gonna go all the way to the ceiling, it's. This one is almost like a forty-five and it drags the stuff up, this other one goes is a vertical unit. So it's a different style of unit. They're probably basically about the same effectiveness, but and I did look at that to see. Was there one that would do a better job than a in-kind and I couldn't see it.
Mr. Dunle, do you have something to add?
I, two things uh uh that are important for me to add on this, number one, um. Any different form of unit rather than an in-kind install. Um if it is not, an in-kind install is going, will as Mr. Messer pointed out. Is essentially, for lack of a better term, grandfathered into the approval of the plant with KDHE who is contracted with the EPA. To provide that inspection, if a different form is placed in there, then that will be subject to. Both either EPA and K- KDHE or KDHE on behalf of EPA uh evaluation. They could, they are entirely entitled, if we do that. To require us to complete an engineering study as to the effectiveness of a different system in the current plant that we. So we could also have to pay for a engineering study as required. So I I do wanna bring that to council's attention, that that is a risk with a. If we decide to go in a direction other than in-kind replacement. The other point that I need to bring to your attention is, uh this is an emergency replacement. And that the as as Mr. Messer's um comments indicated and as the agenda item review sheet indicates. Uh the the contract, the contractual terms for this replacement, because it's in-kind. And because it's on an emergency basis, we're we're accepting those such as they are. We're not gonna be able to get something else in the timeframe to avoid administrative fines. So it means that we're dealing with something that will work. But the contract's not one that, the the contract is one that we are for economic reasons. Required to accept terms that are less than desirable for certain things, that we may not otherwise. Um go accept, we have no choice here for practical reasons. Um in other words, this seller i- is. Is going to use their terms and we need to be aware of that, I need to bring that to your attention. Not that there's any, not that we anticipate a problem, but for instance. They require an agreement that we commit to arbitration, that arbitration occur in Broward County, Florida. So if there's any contract problem here. Resolution will be more expensive, that said, it likely will save the city significant money if you do the. If we take this action now and in the future make sure that we. That our maintenance schedule is a little more consistent.
One of the things I keep throwing out and I just wanted to explain something, I keep saying EPA and KDHE. EPA is who we report to for that plant because. The lagoons and the smaller system KDHE, but we're dealing directly with EPA on this. Because they are in charge of mechanical plants and that's who we're answering and they've, like I said, they've given me a mandate. They want it fixed in six months and we're a month down the road, but I think you saw the response that it came up with on it. I'll be doing another one as soon as I have a timetable for them.
And we don't anticipate there'll be any excess time of getting getting the parts.
Oh, they'll understand it, if we have it on order, I don't have any problem, I don't think I'll have any problem, as long as I can show them that it's been ordered and we're proceeding.
Especially considering the way everything is right now. I'm sure they expect delays on parts and stuff. Any other questions or comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
I move to accept the Enviroline bid for an in-kind replacement.
Do we need to say the amount? Do we need to say the amount?
No, sir.
I got a motion in second, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Motion carries five zero zero, thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is consider a waiver of bid process and acceptance of bid for Lincoln Street. Um and Mr. Messer has the floor, and this is once again a project that has been needed done for a long time and. Uh this is kinda just phase one of it, but it's the initial, initial work that needs to be done.
What has happened is um. Historically, uh before I got here. The city work crews have been doing all the repairs to Lincoln Street. And I kind of stopped that because it was taking, we had three, four people and it's taken three or four months. All the other streets are suffering, so I made a decision to. Try to contract this out instead, so this project is where the work was done. Um by the city crews to bring it up to surface. And last summer, they were allowing it to sit and settle and get ready to be paved and the crews were gonna pave it. Last fall, but I felt crack seal and the roads and the conditions and I thought. We could easily contract this out and get out of the business of doing these slabs and tying up crews for three months at a time. A little bit wrong because again, got jerked around by the high demand for contractors, we've been trying since fall to get a bid. Uh this is the first solid bid that we got, I got some last fall, but the weather closed it out and we couldn't do it. So Pat's been beating the bushes hard, I've been beating the bushes hard and we finally got one and I know. Uh this wasn't um. This wasn't probably vetted as as normal because it hasn't gone to the uh uh legal yet and. Uh Dan Miller's group hasn't helped me yet, but we will do that. Um the project is two hundred and twenty feet of curb and forty feet wide slab, hundred and ten feet long. It's heavily traveled. Um we have a bid of seventy-three thousand seven hundred from NewCo. Uh if you wanna reject it and return it to staff, uh and then we could continue to try to find another local contractor. Um but right now, it's almost impossible, it's too small for most contractors, they want something big, it's a small contract. We could shut down all the asphalt mowing and street projects and return to the practice we had before spending all the time on it. But I would, what I'm wanting, what I'm recommending is that governing body accept the bid provided by NewCo. As modified by the addition of reasonable bonding costs and authorize the mayor and staff to execute a contract. After review by the city attorney. Is what I like, I know it's uh. I just, it's one of those that I think we have to make a statement to the businesses. Along that line that we are committed to fixing that road and I think this is step one.
It'll take several phases, cause that's just one section over there and it's, for anybody that's not, sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Messer. Not aware where this is, this is in, this is in front of the Seats Corporation and Clorox and those businesses over there and so. Any of you, I know I've, I drove it again last week and I've driven it probably five or six times in the last six months just to see the state of it. And it it's in pretty rough shape.
I walked it this morning, uh the whole length of it. I've picked out another section that we wanna target. Uh what we're gonna try to do, I mean, it's really, it's really a difficult project for the st- street department. I don't have the equipment to fix it right, I think we have to go by contract. If we, uh for example, down just past the railroad tracks is the worst section right now. If we were to try to fix that, we would have to mill it out, bust up the concrete. And I just don't have the people or the time to do that, so we are going, that's phase two, is gonna do that section. I've asked, uh and Pat and I asked Dan Miller a while back. To start working on a contract to do the south part, all the way to the intersection and fix the intersection, so we're working on. Trying to come up with a project to do that large section, but in the meantime. We're gonna start working probably tomorrow, uh unless some another emergency jumps up. To start doing potholes and doing some cement in these potholes, but it's one of these. Difficult projects because the seat string, the seat is concrete. Uh we can't just go mill it out like it's asphalt and put a new layer hot mix in. Uh it's not deep enough for us to to put a bunch of cement in there, we're gonna try a project. Or a product that is specifically made for concrete patches. Um it's no different than North Webster, which we need to do that desperately up there as well. But we're stretched pretty thin, as you know. But we're gonna try to do their best we can to fix the worst of it. And this is a phase, one phase is this, finish this little project up. The next phase is up past the railroad track and then the next phase is gonna be all the way to the road and the intersection. I mean, I sat down there, or like I said, I walked it this morning. And if you do that, you will be astounded, the number of trucks on that road. And I know the businesses are a little bit upset from our lack of progress, but. We're gonna have to contract it, we do not have the equipment to do the job properly, we have a small milling machine. It would eat that little machine up and we're only doing two feet wide section at a time, we're not doing much. Uh we don't have a lay down machine, so we can't tear this hundred and ten feet out and put asphalt back, which I think. Would be a good idea, but I don't have a lay down machine to be able to put the asphalt down properly. Uh we just, it's beyond our capability and I just can't see us tying our crews up like we have in the past.
I don't, I don't think there's any question that contracting it for the work is is the best route for us. I I think that's pretty easy to to see. Do you, do you feel like, because again, we're in a one bid situation. Um do you feel like these are similar to the numbers you guys were seeing like in the fall?
I had these similar numbers, in fact, I was surprised it was as low as it was, I thought it would be oh well over a hundred. Because the ones last fall were sixty-five, seventy-five in that range. But then the weather closed down and they said, we can't get to it, or it's too cold to do it and we got shut down and then. None of those bids were, none of those were willing to bid because right now they're in the middle of everything. It's kinda like uh, we were lucky to get Vance Brothers to do the chipping seal because everybody contracts out or plans their year. Same thing here, the years are planned and we're gonna have to wait till the very end to be able to try to find somebody else.
How many more phases would you anticipate to get this to the quality that we feel like it needs to be?
Probably easily three.
Additional beyond this one so far?
I'm sorry, two additional, two, no, three, I'm sorry, three, this is phase one. Past the railroad track, I would say would be two and then the intersection would be three, so yeah, there would be. Three total phases and then we're gonna have to try to cut out and repair, we'll use our crews to try to repair the smaller sections. In between to bring them up to standard.
The stuff that's in your wheelhouse.
It's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a nightmare, and another thing too is the time. If especially the one past the railroad track that's so horrible right now, it's right at their drive. And if we try to shut that down to work on it. I mean, tremendous amount of traffic going through there, so we're gonna have to schedule it to do ha- even half the road at a time. We don't have the people to get in there and knock it out and get out.
I think this is the best option to serve those businesses on that road who, you know, are investing in our community. I think everybody here received an email from Mr. Stevens and I know he's looking for that to get done. So I think this is the best way to do that for him and the other businesses.
And over the next two weeks, we're gonna make a concerted effort to do what we can do. There's some areas we can mail out the old asphalt and put new and the potholes, we'll try to dig them out best we can and use this new product. They use it on airfields for quick turnarounds, get in and get out, I can't remember the name off the top of my head, it's a number, but I can't remember it. So we're gonna try that, we're gonna start tomorrow, but next week's gonna be difficult, it's gonna be over a hundred, I've got the crews coming in. At six to get out of the heat, cause I don't want anybody to die of heat stroke on, stroke on my watch, so. We're struggling to to catch everything up, um still short-staffed as heck, but. I think I'm six or seven vacancies in public works right now, so we're trying.
I like this option.
I'm good with this, if you feel like it's a good bid.
Like it's well needed and like, like you said, I was surprised that the bid came in the same or even less than a couple of them from last year.
I say we jump.
So yeah, I'd say we get, get it before they change.
I think, I think I'd like to repeat that one thing, I think Chuck stepped out, so I'd like to repeat what I read, I don't know if he heard it or not. I recommend that the governing body accept the bid provided by NewCo. As modified by the addition of the reasonable bond costs and authorize the mayor and staff to execute a contract offer. After review by the city attorney.
Right now, you're asking for approval and acceptance of bid, uh contract consistent with the, with the. Uh market requirements and our general standards, that's not gonna be a a problem, you're requesting approval of the bid here, not approval of the contract. And and the author, and authorizing mayor to.
I think it's gonna save some time and like I said, we have a. Very interested group watching our movements on this. Begging for us to do something.
I'm ready to make a motion if, if you're ready. Uh I move to approve the waiver of bid process and accept NewCo's bid for seventy-three thousand seven hundred dollars for the Lincoln Street repairs.
Got a motion in second, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Motion carries five zero zero. Alright, next item on the agenda is consider the authorization to provide the Johnson County Clerk's notification of the internet intent. To exceed the revenue neutral rate and establish a date to hold a revenue neutral rate hearing and Mrs. Armstrong, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is the first time I've ever used this, so bear with me a minute.
Maybe, sometimes it works.
Thank you. Okay, thank you and um this is um the item that we're talking about, the revenue neutral rate discussion. And. The uh the approval to authorize the Johnson and Miami County clerks of the intent to notify. Johnson County clerks of the intent to exceed the revenue neutral rates, both within and outside the boundaries of Johnson County Fire District. So this is the timeline, this timeline is for a revenue neutral rate process. On June the fifteenth, the city received notification of what those revenue neutral rates were for our jurisdictions. Then today is July the fourteenth and so we're asking you to. And so we're asking you to consider an intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. On July twentieth, assuming that we do file the intent to levy above the revenue neutral rate. That notification is due to the clerk. Then at sometime between August twentieth and September twentieth, we need to hold a revenue neutral rate hearing. And that is to hear from the citizens regarding our intent to levy above the revenue, revenue neutral rate. And then also at some point between August twentieth and September twentieth, we would hold a budget hearing to review the budget. So those two events, those two hearings can be held at the same meeting or they could be held at a separate meeting. We don't need to decide that today. We just need to address the revenue neutral portion of it. And then between August twentieth and October twentieth, we need, if we choose. To exceed the revenue neutral rate, then we adopt the resolution and formally adopt the budget. And we do need to submit the budget to the county clerk by October the first. Okay, so, um, with that being said. This revenue neutral rate process was adopted by the legislature in twenty twenty-one. The request, this authorization doesn't adopt a budget, it doesn't adopt a mill levy. But if the city doesn't follow this process and hold the hearings. And if our budget does exceed the revenue neutral rate, then we have to refund any overage directly back to the taxpayer. So just a few terms, the revenue neutral rate is supposed to be by definition. The tax rate that would generate the same property tax revenue as levied the previous year using the current. Tax shares total assessed valuation. Essentially what it's saying is. The revenue neutral rate is supposed to produce the same exact dollar tax levy in taxes. This year as we collected last year. Because we have two, two taxing jurisdictions. It does not. Let, what will happen with our revenue neutral and I will show you a little bit later. We actually come out below revenue. Okay, the assess, the taxes are levying in dollars. So we're talking about these mill levy rates. But we're assessing our, we're levying our taxes in dollars. And the mill levy rate is an after calculation. The, the estimated assessed valuation. That's what we're basing our estimates on. And this is the total estimated assessed valuation of all the properties in the city. And it's subject to reductions for pending protest, reevaluate, reevaluations and exemptions. So we have been given a number, but it is subject to being lower yet than what we're seeing here. Our taxable assessed value, that's what's prepared after the budgets are submitted. And they actually calculate the actual mill levy rate. So this is a lot of definitions, not that you need to know any of this. We'll move on, but it kind of. Helps to understand why we are really just dealing with an estimate here. This, there's no, uh, firm number. What I tell you and what we discuss today will not be the levy rate in the very end. Okay, so this is the proposed revenue neutral rate. The city has four funds, our general fund, debt service fund, cemetery fund and fire fund. The fire service area, the area that we provide contracted fire service for. Has all four of those levies. And that revenue neutral rate is three zero point three zero nine. The general fund is all of our operating departments excluding water and sewer. So it's all of the business that we do in the city. The debt service fund is what we levy to pay for our general obligations. This would be the payments that we pay over and above. A levy that's paid for by special assessments. There are some bonds that are paid by water and sewer. There are some bonds that are paid out of other funded money. So this is what the city is contributing over and above all of those other debt service funds. Cemetery fund, the city, um, provides the cemetery some operating funds annually. It amounts to thirty thousand dollars is what their request is and we levy for that. And then the fire fund is our contract for the contracted area. That's the geographic, they call it the old Spring Hill and all of Miami County. So it's our original city and all of Miami County we contract for. The area that doesn't have the contracted fire. Has the same fire service, but that area is levied for directly on their tax bill. From fire one, I believe. Okay, so that is the difference in, in what our R and R. For our non-fire service area is in our fire service area. So then when we look at. Did I let this go too long? Okay, so this shows where our twenty twenty-two budget was, our actual amount that we levied. So if we look down at the very bottom number, the total for our fire tax rate. Was thirty-six point two eight eight zero. And what they are seeing is our revenue neutral rate. Is thirty point three zero nine zero. And then for the no fire district, our levy was twenty-three point two one two oh. And our non-fire service area is nineteen point one nine six oh. So what does that mean in dollars? Okay, our estimated, um, tax receipts. Based upon the estimated assessed valuation of a hundred and thirty-nine, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. I think I've left out some decimal points on that. That's, that should be million, so I do apologize on that. I'm not sure exactly which part is missing, but let's say it's close to a hundred and forty million. Okay, but our estimated tax revenue from that, we're using the R and R. Would decrease our revenue for the city by a hundred and three thousand dollars, a hundred and four thousand dollars. And I believe of that, it's levied by fund. So the general fund would go down about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, in revenue and then we're increasing revenue to our fire district. And the cemetery is staying about the same and as is the bond and interest. Okay, so what I'm asking for is, um. To elect to inform the county of the intent to exceed revenue neutral rate. I am proposing that we adopt this. We don't have to adopt a budget, but I am recommending that we do inform the county of our intent to exceed revenue neutral. Hold the revenue neutral rate hearing. The proposed date is August the twenty-fifth. What we do have to do is propose a rate that our budget will not exceed. So we need to have some discussion on that. We can have discussion on anything and I can take any questions. Before we talk about the actual rate that we don't wanna exceed.
That'll not be where we land. That's just where we're not gonna exceed.
That's the cap.
It's a, it's a ceiling.
That's correct. And I will talk about, see, is Mr. Riffle still here? Okay, last year when we did this, we again elected to exceed the revenue neutral rate. I'll tell, I'll tell a little bit of story about what happened last year and it could happen again this year is, um. We, we elected a high number. We had every intent of attempting to be revenue neutral. And the budget that we adopted was revenue neutral. But when our numbers came in. Our estimated assessed valuation that we used in the budget process was higher than what. The actual numbers were. So then our levy, our actual levy amount came out higher than what we had proposed. So in the very end, the numbers that we had proposed on our budget were revenue neutral, but our actual number was not. So had we not gone through this process, we would have had to return every amount of excess back to the citizens. So if a city really does intend to go revenue neutral, they probably need to come in lower. Than where the numbers are estimating. And so we would probably need to adopt a budget that was even lower than that. Hundred and three reduction there. But the story that I was gonna tell about Mr. Riffle is. When we had done, done the revenue neutral and then, um. We posted it in the paper and it says, well, come in and see any, any, um, come in and see if you want more information. So he came in and asked me for information and we were sitting there looking and my numbers didn't add up. And so he says, why are your numbers not adding up? Well, we didn't really intend to go for our high number anyway. So I didn't actually match those up. So I will do a much better job this time. But the moral and the point of my story is, is when we're choosing this rate, it's really just to meet the process. The city didn't intend to go for that higher rate. We really always adopt, always intended to adopt a budget that was lower than that. So ideally, we are, I am proposing to hold the revenue neutral rate hearing on August twenty-fifth. And then perhaps the next meeting after that, we would hold our budget meeting. So we probably do wanna get our intended budget wrapped up. So that we can post the true numbers and not perhaps a higher number. Once you, um. What, whatever you put in the paper, you can always go below it, but you can never go over it. So the objective is we wanted to set a number that was high enough that would certainly cover us if we had to. But we don't wanna choose a low number just in case there is a reason that you found that you need to increase over that. So anytime we do a filing in the paper, we'll do them for our revenue neutral rate hearing. We'll do them for our budget hearings. We cannot exceed anything that we post in the paper. Once we, uh, put those out there, that is a cap and we cannot exceed it.
So I'd like to add to that, this, this is the second year of this process, um, that the state started last year. The state's recommendations last year and this year, if you were planning to go revenue neutral. Was to go through the hearing process anyway, because of the situation that you told. Because the final val- evaluations come in in November and they could shift on you in the wrong way. And even if you were revenue neutral and did everything that you were supposed to, when you did your budget process. It could still go badly for you, which is why they recommended doing the hearing, even if you're gonna go revenue neutral. And that's what we did last year. And I know that was really confusing for the public to understand. And it's really confusing for everyone to understand because it's a really confusing process. So, um, I, I, I think it's important that we really highlight that. We're not bounding, we're not binding ourselves to anything tonight. We're essentially setting what will be the, the top, the ceiling. This is the most we could levy if we chose, if we choose to levy it.
And obviously our goal is always to get it, is keep it as low as possible.
Right. And it also keeps, it gives flexibility to you to go lower. So even if your intentions are to be at a lower number. You can set your ceiling at a higher number in order to give yourself flexibility. And that is, in my experience with others that have gone through this process, the best way to go about it. In order to not catch yourself in a mistake later that you can't fix, which I think is a, a really bad scenario. That no municipality wants to get into with having to give money back.
Uh, I think there's something that we can't say enough times. And I know I got to be a part of this last year. I had no idea. I, I had to have you hold my hand and walk me through it and show me everything, which you did a fantastic job, but. You, I don't know any other organization that did what you and staff did. So you guys did a phenomenal job. And if the community doesn't understand that, we need to say it over and over and over. You adopted a revenue neutral budget. Now again, we have the, the timeline that you showed up there. You didn't have on that timeline, the last piece of it, which is what Brian was saying, was the evaluation that comes in after. So we have to put this math equation together prior to knowing all the variables. So we have to just make a guess. And again, you did that and, and staff did that budget, you and Pat. And you guys did such an amazing job. And there were a lot of people like Brian was saying who, it's very confusing. I, you know, a lot of people who didn't understand the process and. I was one of those people, but obviously you, you helped me and other people in the staff and, and the community helped me. But there's a lot of people that didn't understand that and thought that when it came to this right here, they thought that that meant that we were raising taxes and that's not true. That's not true at all. That's, that's just like what Brian was saying. So I just wanted to make sure that the community understands. What an amazing job the staff did and you, um, at last year's, uh, time doing this, so.
And I think we were one of the only communities anywhere around that went, that went with a revenue neutral rate budget. Cause I talked to lots of other mayors at several conferences throughout the year this year and I, not a single one said they went revenue neutral. And they were really surprised that we were able to.
So again, community, this is amazing.
For a growing community such as Spring Hill, that our assessed valuation is climbing every year. And this year it is under twenty percent, but it is significant. The estimated are between seventeen and eighteen percent. To actually decrease your tax levy in that situation is, is probably impossible. Maybe you can do it one year, but you should not do it from year after year because. As a growing city, you need to maintain or increase your services and you're unable to do that. If your primary revenue source is your tax levy and you lower that year to year. However, the city is in a good position, so our sales tax is increasing. So that it does take a little bit of pressure off of that property tax. And so as that continues. The city will be able to lighten up, I believe, the property taxes so that. The impact to the citizens and the property owners is not as great.
Well, and that was gonna be my second point was to be able to do that one year, insane. That's ridiculous, amazing. But to do it two years is highly unlikely and I just thought it might be a great idea to. Set the expectation that, that would be very difficult to do back to back years.
So, and I think our objective, as the mayor said, we do not wanna increase. Property taxes to the citizens. That's not really the objective. But the city does need to maintain a certain level of services and we need to take care of what we have, our roads. The police department and all of the services that we offer. So that la- just in terms of dollars. Last year when we adopted our budget, it was about eighty thousand dollars less in tax revenue. Than what we had collected the year before. But had we not gone revenue neutral. We would have been in a positive three hundred thousand dollars. So let's say that made a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar swing. That could have paid for that Lincoln Street repair. So those are the types of trade offs that we're doing and I'm not proposing raising taxes. But I'm trying to stay somewhere in the middle where we don't increase them unnecessarily. What, we are a good steward of our money, but that we're able to, um, take care of the things that we need and without. Taking on loan in debt to do that.
Well, that's an encouragement to us, or at least for me and city staff and stuff to really. Try to pursue businesses and try to get them to come to town to bring in that tax revenue to keep, to keep the tax burden on the citizens low. So that's definitely one of my big obje- objectives.
So the other, like, the final point that I will say is people talk about Spring Hill and their high tax rate. And they're always looking at the one that's loaded with fire. And I don't know how comparable that is. When people are comparing the tax levies, are they comparing one that has the fire service in it? Are they just comparing a city levy? Because if you look at the other tax levy, the no fire, that was twenty-three point two one. And that perhaps is maybe more reasonable. That, that the reason that the levy is thirty-six point two eight eight. Is because it includes the fire service. Now, I'm going to make a recommendation for a proposed, um. Mill levy that we place on our form. And once again, I'm not saying.
About the cap again.
The cap. What I'm saying is the cap. And in the packet, um, I put our historical mill levies in here. Just so that you could get an idea of where we had. Just so that you could get an idea of where we had been in the past. The number that I am proposing to use.
You happen to have that we could put up there or no?
Um, I could, perhaps. Can somebody help me here?
Sorry to put you on the spot. I just feel like everybody would probably like to see that.
Can you push, I don't know how to get it to the main. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so it's kind of, can I magnify more? Okay, so the number, I've got the number circled for twenty twenty, excuse me, for twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. These are our actual tax levies. So it was two seven point two seven four in the no fire district. And three nine point six six one in the fire district. And um I am not really committed in any way, shape or form. And my idea would be whatever you felt comfortable with is fine. And then we will just adopt a budget that meets whatever is listed on the form. But my recommendation is to go high thirty nine point six six one and then two seven point two seven four. The next year in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two, looking at the blue numbers underneath them. Um, that was the actual tax levies the year last year. And what Mrs. Roth was talking about in the red number, thirty five point nine four oh, was our revenue neutral rate. We ended up, after all said and done, at thirty six point two eight eight in the fire district. And then twenty three point two one two in the no fire district. Um, and then with our revenue neutral rate, the blue numbers. Um, and I, I threw out some tax dollars and that's actually how I calculated what our estimated tax dollar would be. So that's really just where we would end up with a really rough draft, um how we would achieve that.
So you're suggesting using those rates?
That's my suggestion, yes.
So that would be thirty nine point six is the rate you're talking about?
Yes.
I wanna make sure that I'm, I'm following you here. Our actual for two twen- two thousand and twenty two, so current year we're in, right?
That's correct.
For fire was thirty six point two eight eight?
Correct.
And for no fire was twenty three point two one two?
Correct.
Okay, that's, those are the actuals that we got last November, once they come in.
Yes.
So the proposed cap is not much higher than what we actually were less three mil, three mils higher, but that's just the cap. That's not what we're saying. We're not gonna raise it to thirty nine. We're saying, put that as the cap that we can't exceed. And historically, it looks like thirty eight, thirty nine is kind of about the most common number over the last ten, fifteen years.
Um, off to the side, the, I took the four years from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty one. Those averaged thirty nine point seven three. We could probably do other averages along the way.
Do you remember what rate we proposed that we would not exceed? I don't, is that on here anywhere last year?
Last year. It was probably that, it had to have been that.
I don't know if you used the same.
That, that high thirty five.
No, it was in the thirty nine and, but I don't recall.
Okay.
The ceiling was significantly higher because it was higher.
So it's around the same of what we're proposing now.
I, I don't recall. It was in the thirty nine number, but I don't remember what it was.
I just wanna make sure that since, again, our intent last year and of hoping this year is also to be revenue neutral. Um, and again, we attempted to do that, but out of, you know, out of no control of our own, the valuation came in higher. Um, which is what made the number a little different than we expected. So I just wanna make sure that we have enough cushion there that we're, it's, and it sounds like we do. For situations like you just described last year.
Yes.
Plenty of cushion there.
My feelings on this is that we should set our ceiling at the numbers that we are at for twenty two, twenty twenty two. The ones that we're currently on, which would be the thirty six two eight eight and the twenty three point two one two.
Okay.
We know with the increased valuation, that the dollars we would bring in by using the exact same figures is gonna be more. We know that we have a significant amount of projects that we wanna make investments in. And we know that we're behind on maintenance and upkeep for some, several things that we're trying to catch up on. Um, so I think it is good to set our ceiling at the spot we're at now. Which means that we can't go higher than where we're at right now, even though we know if we kept the same rate right now, we'll bring in more dollars next year. Um, and I think that also shows a commitment to our community. That we are systematically trying to drive down the mill levy. And, and we would work to come in with a budget that is under those ceiling numbers again. I don't, I don't know that fully revenue neutral is a realistic goal. It, it is a very good goal to work towards, but with the investments we need and want to make, um it's incredibly difficult. So that's what my philosophy would be, is to stay at the, put the ceiling at the rate that we are at now. And then work to come in below that.
Uh, I disagree respectfully. I think that's intentionally handcuffing us unnecessarily.
It does, a little bit.
I, and I'm, I don't uh, I, I think that's putting an unnecessary um hurdle. I, I would love to know, I, let me do the quick math. What was the difference or the percentage that we were shooting for versus we actually got?
And we've been in the like.
Red number is what we were proposing, right?
The red numbers are the, are, those are the R and R, so the thirty point three oh nine. That's the R and R number, yeah. R and R for fire is thirty point three oh nine and for no fire is nineteen point one nine six. I don't think that number's on there, the no fire one.
So that's a three and a half percent swing from what we shot versus what we actually ended up getting.
Yeah.
And I think that's too much of a, doing what you're suggesting. Makes that way too thin.
And the potential penalty.
The ramifications of having to refund the taxpayers. I mean, number one, that's just a huge logistical undertaking that the city would have to do.
No, we don't wanna do that at all.
Well, that's why we're having this neutral, revenue neutral hearing, to not have to do that.
Right. I'm not saying that we need to get rid of, to not do the revenue neutral here. We definitely need to do that. That's.
The problem is the budget is set before we get the evaluation. We have to set the rate and the budget before we get the valuation. So it's, we just have to cross our fingers and hope.
Right.
We already adopted the budget by the time that we get the valuation. So if the valuation comes in way higher, we don't get a choice. We've already adopted it and set it. Then we are held and bound to write a check to every taxpayer.
Right.
And I think that, please, yes.
Okay, on, as long as we hold the hearing and go through the process. That we are going to exceed the revenue neutral rate, we do not get in that penalty phase. So by doing the first thing, just holding the hearing and going through the process, you are avoiding any type of a penalty.
As long as your budget is set anywhere at that ceiling or below.
Yes, yes. So um, the budget that I bring to you. If we put the cap at thirty, now I've lost my nu- thirty six point two eight eight, is that what we're talking about?
That's the one.
Okay, the budget, if we put the budget, bring in a budget that comes with that cap, then um. Brian, Bri- what Brian is saying is, we will get more revenue this year than we did last year. And we should live within that budget, I think.
That is correct, yes. So like, if we set our ceiling on, for the fire district at thirty eight, thirty nine. And gave ourselves the ability to go somewhere between thirty five point nine four oh and thirty nine, that would be a tax raise. If we set our rate, our ceiling at the current rate that we're at, then there's no way we can go above our current rate. Which essentially handcuffs us in raising the rate from where we're at, at the current moment. Which to me is, if you rate, what we can control is the rate. So if we do a rate that is higher than what the rate is this year, that is a tax increase. And that's what we're trying to avoid. And if we set our ceiling at the rate we're at right now. It would handcuff us in being able to do an, a tax increase. That's ru- that's the only thing it would ha- handcuff us on.
Did I understand you correctly? I thought you said you wanted to set the ceiling at thirty six two eight eight. Is that correct?
Yes. For the, for no, for the fire zone, yes.
Okay.
Which is where we're at right now for twenty twenty two budget.
But that's not the ceiling that we were at, the ceiling we were at.
That's not this, the ceiling from last year doesn't matter.
Right.
Who cares what that was? We're, we're at what our actual rate is now.
Right. No, I was just saying that, that, that the ceiling last year wasn't.
I'm saying we take our current rate and make that our ceiling for next year.
I kinda like that plan, because I don't think we need to have tax increases either. I think we just need to stay within the budget.
And it gives us flexibility to have more revenue, to do more projects and not increase the rate. Cause the rate is the only thing that we have control of. We do not have control of assessed valuation. We don't have control of what property valuations are. The only thing that we can control is the rate. And which, which is the mill, the mill levy.
So how would setting the rate at what you're proposing versus setting the rate higher, that just still doesn't lock us in it?
It doesn't lock us into anything.
Changes is the possibility.
It gives us.
If we have to.
It does give us more room to go higher if we wanted to. And what I was proposing would lock us out of being able to go higher than our current rate. Which to me is the tru- is truly the only sense of a tax increase. If we go above thirty six point two eight eight on the fire district, then we are increasing taxes.
Well, and again, whatever we set as the cap does not mean that that's the rate we're going with.
No, like, I hope we can come in at thirty four, or thirty three, something like that.
What, my point is, the only positive I see to yours is, uh, I see the positive of the commitment to the community, showing them that like, hey.
We're not gonna raise.
Doubling down and we're gonna prove that. But the bad part is, it, like I said, it, it limits our options.
It does. And my personal feeling is, when we know our assessed valuation is growing the way that it is. And we know that it's gonna bring us more dollars with the same rate number from one year to the next, then that should be good enough for us. As building a budget in order to, we're, we're getting additional revenue, so we can figure out how to spend it. And we're not changing our rate. The only way we can change our rate is to go down and not up. And I think that is a good sign of us living within our means. And doing good fiscal management with tax dollars. My personal opinion, don't expect, I don't expect my opinion to be the same as everyone else's, so.
Well, it'll force us to work very diligently on the budget, which I think is necessary and needed anyways.
Well, I think it gives us a good idea of exactly what we need to shoot for and what we need to bring to you.
And I, and I'm not naive enough to think that that's gonna create difficult choices for us. Like, we are gonna have to make hard choices on, you know, what streets we can repair, how many streets we can repair. Um, you know, all those types of things. I, I think we've got several difficult choices in front of us when the, when we start diving into the budget.
Well, and I think all of us would love to flip a switch and fix every street in town.
Sure.
I mean, there's definitely, almost every street in town needs some repairs and some need some major repairs. So we're, none of us, like you say, none of us are naive to think that, you know, there's not a lot of work to do. There really is a lot of work to do out there. And we're doing our best as a governing body to get it approved with, without raising people's taxes. To get these things fixed in a timely manner. Now, timely is relative.
Sure.
Because you also have to have tax dollars to make those repairs.
I, I wanna be clear, I do not wanna raise taxes. And I, I, you know, Ms. North already said the same. And it sounds like Mr. Peel, you're obviously on the same boat. Uh, I don't know about.
Oh, yes.
Berkey and Mr. Manhav.
Definitely don't wanna raise taxes.
I, I don't think anybody here wants to do that. Um, my only concern, a- again, that I've already stated and I won't say it again. But we have, as Mr. Messer was saying, we have so many projects. There's Lincoln Street, there's the Veterans Park, there's, and a thousand others. Um, not that that should be funded with taxpayers' dollars. Um, the fact that we had a three, over a three mil drop from twenty one to twenty two, right? Am I reading that correctly?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I mean, that, that's.
Like, it was like three, four mils last year. I mean, that was a big hu- big drop last year.
Right.
That was a huge achievement, as you pointed out.
Right. So we dropped three mils, again, huge. Um, if we were to stay, like you were saying, even at the same rate that we currently are, um, that's still an amazing feat. Uh, we just have so many things that we need to do. And, and there's a combination of things that is how you accomplish them. Combing over that budget and making sure that every dollar is being spent appropriately. And funding it through development and taxes. Uh, again, I'm, I don't want the citizens to burden that. I, I just get nervous when someone handcuffs me. And we have this laundry list of things to do. I, I would just feel a little more comfortable. Maybe we don't have to go with the thirty nine uh five nine nine. But uh, gosh, maybe something, or I'm sorry, the thirty nine six, six one. But man, maybe even like thirty six and a half would make me feel more comfortable about this.
Yeah.
To have a little more wiggle room. And still, even if we went thirty six and a half, that's still a, over a three mil drop from last year.
So.
That's still ridiculously good.
I mean, I, I'd be.
And not to say that's the rate we're adopting, but just to say that's.
It's our top. That's, that's the highest.
Six and a half or thirty seven, either one of those.
I think that would make me feel, me personally, and again, obviously, it's, it's a governing body here for this decision, but I.
I would be okay with setting them at thirty six and a half and twenty three and a half. Rounding, rounding those smaller ones up to a ha- to a half a mil. Um, and, and especially, and as we get into the process, but we, you know, I am absolutely gonna be shooting for numbers lower than that. But I think that.
Hopefully, we all are.
That, that would be my tolerance level i- is where we're at right now this year. But I'm okay with setting the caps at, uh, it, as a, you know, if, for the rest of the governing body. If that's where, if you, you know, and I'm quiet all night. What do you think?
I don't think I'll. I think infrastructure is expensive, right?
Yeah.
I think roads are expensive. I think um. Uh, the road we were talking about earlier.
Lincoln.
Lincoln.
It's expensive. So I'm not into raising taxes, but um. I also think, you know, you want this stuff fixed, we have to have some, I think you have to have solutions, so.
Yeah, the only way to fix this stuff is with tax.
Only way to fix this is tax. I mean, look, this is, this is, this is government, right? Taxation, I'm not saying more taxation or less, just saying, uh, I don't see restricting ourselves or, or uh. I don't know what the right word is, but, 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 but preventing ourselves from making better decisions in the future that we just like, like, I can't see the future. I don't necessarily. So I think um, on the high end, would you say thirty six and a half?
I'd be okay with thirty six and a half.
I mean, I think that makes more sense than, than going lower.
And maybe we're splitting hairs, cause either way, this is still a phenomenal accomplishment. Because again, I would love for somebody to find another community that's doing this.
Lu- uh, Mrs. Armstrong, uh, had mentioned earlier that our, our sales tax is doing better. Um, and you know, as that supplement becomes better and becomes a stronger resource. That's things that, that's something that we can look at in future budget situations like this, perhaps a year from now and say, okay. We're more comfortable bringing the mill levy down a little bit, because we've got more coming in on the sales side. And it's bringing us, you know, the same or a little bit more amount of dollars overall, and we're being able to do this. Or, you know, so I mean, I feel good that the sales tax source is gonna get better. The more time we go, that source is gonna get better. And that's gonna give us more options to keep lowering and just, you know, piece by piece, getting little by little.
Yeah, we've got, I mean, we've got a bunch of new businesses coming in. It's only gonna help increase that.
Yeah.
Tax revenue. You got QuickTrip, you've got liquor store, you've got Moody's Hardware, you've got a bunch of different ones. And then a bunch of different ones that, you know, we're talking to and hoping, hoping to get here. So with, with all that.
And.
That'll definitely.
Val- valuation's gonna go up next year also. Or, or, when I'd say valuation, I mean total valuation. So our, our total valuation's gonna be more than the hundred, almost hundred and forty million that we've got this year.
Right.
Any other questions, comments?
Are we, do you need the rates in the motion?
Yes, please.
She's gotta put it in the, the form that she gives to the county.
Is that ready?
I'm more comfortable with. I'm more comfortable with personally with thirty six point five than thirty six point two eight eight. Obviously, my goal is to come in as low as possible. You know, I hope we come in at thirty two, you know. But I get, I think that gives us a little bit more flexibility. If something were to happen, hopefully that doesn't happen, you know, cause like I say, I'm never one to. Raise taxes at all. Um, but I think that gives us not a lot of flexibility, but just a little bit of flexibility.
Thirty six and a half, twenty three and a half?
Yep.
Okay.
And once again, we're gonna have to be on the budget. We're gonna, you know, cause even at, even at thirty six point five or even at thirty six point two eight eight, you know, that budget's.
Yeah.
Have to be on point.
It's it's gonna be a tall task, no doubt.
It's gonna be some work to do.
Uh, is Chad still with us, Mr. Finance?
Mr. Young, are you still there?
Yeah, here.
Sorry, Mr. Young.
It's hard to jump in when you're not there.
Sorry, no, I was surprised to not hear from you.
We wanna hear from Mr. Mike.
Oh, yeah, I I would, uh, I would echo Brian's original statement. I I think with the assessed values increasing. I'd actually be comfortable keeping it the same as what we were at. Going to thirty six and a half, I'd probably be okay with. Um, because everybody else wants to do that, but if it was, if it was up to me, I'd say, hey, just to be a good faith to the community saying, hey, we're gonna do. And be as fiscally conservative as we can be, keeping it at what it is. So. I would, I was, I I was actually in in almost total agreeance with everything he said, so pretty impressed with, uh, Mr. Peel.
Finance Junior.
Yeah. So, yeah, I'm, I mean, I'm open to either one. I'm, obviously, I'd prefer to stay, um. The where we're at, but if we have to go to thirty six and a half to get the everybody on board, then I would be willing to go here.
Any other comments, questions? If not, I entertain a motion for whoever wants to do it.
Move to authorize the and direct the city clerk to submit and in substantial form. The proposed notifications to Miami and Johnson County clerks of the intent of the city to exceed the revenue neutral rates. To the properties that are within and outside the boundaries of our fire district service area with a no fire at twenty three and a half. Excuse me, twenty three point five and within fire at thirty six point five.
And once again, that's a cap.
That's correct.
Make sure we put that in there.
The budget will not go any higher.
I'm just making stating publicly, that's a cap. So everybody knows that's not what we're setting the rate at.
Yeah, she just needs the number.
Yeah.
Put in the form.
Yep.
Second.
Got a motion second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor.
I.
I.
Alright.
Motion carries five zero zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the discussion. Appreciate it.
Alright, with that, we're gonna move on to announcements and reports. Um, Mr. Burton's not here with us tonight. Um. Trying to think of anything that he might have announced. Um, Jackie can probably add some things when we get to him. At, uh, Mr. Burton might have announced. I don't think I have any further announcements, um, other than it was fun to celebrate. Independence Day with my family and the community and blow up lots of stuff and. See, driving into, it's kind of fun driving into town late at night and seeing just the array of fireworks everywhere. It definitely makes me. Proud to be an American and enjoy that freedom. Um, with that, that's about all I got.
Um, I had, actually, Mr. Van Houten and I had the pleasure of meeting with the new superintendent, um, at USD two thirty. And I know you have met with him as well, but, um, it was just very, I felt like it was very positive and maybe Mr. Van Houten wants to elaborate, but. I was really, um, excited about the opportunity, the unique opportunity of him being new and us being relatively new. And and being able to partner and, um, hopefully do some great things for our overlapping constituents. Uh, and so that that was, I felt like a very positive meeting. Um, I also. Felt like, uh, my email was busy this week, uh, so it was kind of good to feel like we were actually. Getting things done and checking things off lists and actually interacting with the community and, um. Serving, which is the whole reason that I wanted to do this, so it felt good.
And I'll echo what, um, Mrs. Ross said. Um, I was able to meet with, uh, Dr. Link Latrell on his first day, the su- the new superintendent of the USD two thirty. And, uh, Brian beat me to it. He got the first.
I got the first slot. I beat all of you.
I got the second one. So, um, but it was great to get to meet with him, and I do think he's gonna be a a welcome asset to the community and and, um. We both met for quite a while and we talked about, and I think we really both have a big desire to bring that partnership of the. City along with the school district and make that a stronger partnership and really work together, cause. Ultimately, we should be working together in close knit operation for the community that we love. And so I think we both had a huge desire for that. And, um, he right off the bat had a lot of questions asked about the community, about different things throughout. You know, different processes and everything. And so I think he's really just jumping, jumping all in. And, uh, really wants to get to know the community and the community members and, um, kind of some of our history and how we operate. And so I I think it's gonna be great. I was, I was impressed. Mr. Van Houten?
I have no report. Uh, I met with superintendent too. Um, he's a good guy, uh, really. Look forward to, you know, what's out there for us to do, um, and build relationships. Uh, I think he's. Gonna be really good for our school district and for our community, so. But I also wanted to make sure that you guys knew that I beat, I got the first meeting. Uh, we have a pretty big event tomorrow on Main Street, uh, if you're available. Um, the Chamber hosts a. A coffee event every couple of weeks, uh, and they're doing that in conjunction with Fox Four's, one of their Zip Trip. Um, activities or broadcasts, uh, so they're gonna, Fox Four is gonna be on Main Street broadcasting as early as seven AM.
Seven to ten.
Yep, uh, the Chamber, the normal Chamber Coffee Event happens at eight o'clock. Uh, I believe they're closing the street off.
Yes.
And having it available for people to be out there. I know, um, there's gonna be like yard games and stuff set up. So some different activities, there'll also be coffee and refreshments, um, that are gonna be provided by the Bean. So we've got lots of things happening. So just a cool event to highlight our community. And what's one of the cool things about our community, which is Main Street. Um, uh, sharing with the Chamber has worked a lot to make that happen and make sure that that's a good event, so. Um, if you're able to attend that, I would highly recommend that. Um, and the only other thing I have is I was able to meet. With Mrs. Armstrong yesterday for, gosh, probably close to an hour and a half. Um, uh, going over budget things and talking about the budget and different things of of thought processes. So that was, uh, a really good meeting, good talk, lots of good information transferred. Um. I'm super excited to do the same thing with our new finance director and and get to meet her and. And learn more about her and kind of understand her philosophies as well, so, um, that's everything I got.
And I keep tagging along everybody, what everybody else is saying. But yeah, tomorrow morning, I think it's gonna be a great event for our community. I I think they said, Fox Four said they do about eight of these a year. Uh, so they reached out to us and asked if we'd be willing to participate, and I thought it'd be a great thing for our community, a great thing for our. Downtown businesses and just the entire community in general. So they'll be highlighting a bunch of different things throughout town. Um, so yeah, you can make it out there, it'd be great. There'll be stuff for the kids to do and just fun, fun time down there, so. And it'll be in the mornings, it won't be quite nearly as hot, so. Mr. Dunley. Oh, sorry.
I was gonna talk about the Zip Trip too.
Go for it.
Covered it, so it sounds like a great morning, in the morning.
And Mr. Young, do you have anything?
Um, I guess I was, I wanted to find out a little more about the QuickTrip. I know. I think something was said at the planning meeting, but, uh, do we have a ETA on when that's gonna be completed, ready to open?
We don't, we don't have an exact date, and contrary to popular belief, what we're actually waiting on right now is the state. Um, so, long story short, there's, um. They are waiting on internet, but it's not the internet necessarily they're waiting on. It's it's waiting on the state to approve. Right away for them to run their internet to QuickTrip. Um, so. That's what we're waiting on, waiting on the state. We are working close knit with them, and they do think the process is gonna move pretty quickly. Um, but that is, that is the current holdup right now, so we're hoping, they're hoping a few weeks, but we can't. Once again, that's not up to us, so they're not being held up by by the city, so that's, that's all I'll really say on that. So we we hope in the next few weeks.
Sounds good, that's it.
Alright, Mr. Dunley.
I am happy to report that, uh, for everyone else who's not aware of this, um, city of Spring Hill. Um, was victorious in defending against the suit. From the city of Olathe, with the city of Spring Hill won and the Kansas Supreme Court held. That the, uh, prior annexation agreement, which was not even reviewed or executed by council. From two thousand and six could not be used to bind this council or any other council. Uh, of government ongoing in the future under Kansas law and the boundaries. Rather arbitrary boundaries, um, set by some agreement passed is no, are no longer. Binding upon this entity, which means, in short, that there are a lot of people who want to. A lot, there are, um, properties, uh, immediately to our north. Um, and sometimes to the east who wish to become part of the city of Spring Hill, and they will now have that opportunity to do so. Uh, and that is a significant victory for the city. I'm sorry. And, uh, so ru- that's a, that's a very, that's a piece of very, very good news, um. For for all, so congratulations.
What was the name of the city attorney in that? The the attorney that was working on that specifically?
Uh, uh, Kurt Tiedemann. Um, Kurt, Kurt is, um. At the time, this, this before I was city attorney and I was requested to actually handle the case and I, I said, I, I'm sorry, I can't. And, uh, I gave some referrals and and they, and Kurt, uh, handled the matter for the city. Uh, from Lathrop GPM.
And that, and that was his, sorry, that was his first case at the Supreme Court, right? I believe.
That I don't know.
I thought I heard that. I don't know for sure, but I thought I heard that, so.
Yeah, I don't know, Kurt's, Kurt.
Anyways.
I don't wanna use age, but Kurt.
Congratulations to him.
Yeah.
Yeah, do, job well done and it's a, it's a, uh, excellent result for the city.
Alright, anything else?
Nothing for.
Alright, Chief Hanson?
A couple of things, uh, in the past, uh, after the Fourth of July, it's been asked about what types of calls for service that we've handled. Um, outside of the legal lim- legal window of firework usage and the timeframe we handled. Seventeen firework calls that would have been outside of the window, and we had four, unfortunately, we had four fire calls. Uh, fortunately, um, only one had some property damage, the rest were all grass fires, but they were all firework related. National Night Out is coming up on August second and, um, exciting that we have six neighborhoods participating. Um, I don't know what that would be mathematically, but the last two years we've only had two. So, um, that's huge. Uh, and, uh, we're gonna be excited about going around to all those neighborhoods and visiting, uh, the residents. The fire department will also be out about, um, doing that as well, so pretty excited about that. Um, this week, we conducted some interviews for our opening. Uh, we had some really good candidates that we got to speak with. And several of them are moving forward to the next phase. So hopefully, and then, well, it takes about three months, so. Before we actually fill the position, but, um, hopefully we'll be able to come out with a really good fit.
And are these the positions with the grant money? The the two positions with the grant money that was approved? Or these just just, uh, the vacant positions?
Okay, um, no, this is the, uh, vacant position from, uh, an officer who, uh, resigned.
Yes, alright.
We won't know if we, um, earn the grant until I think sometime in October. And then we'll know if we earn the grant.
Alright, Madam Clerk?
Uh, yes, I would like to mention that the city is in the, uh. We have an opening in our municipal court clerk. Um, our current one will be retiring in September, which is exciting news. For Dawn. She's an excellent municipal court clerk and we will miss her, so. Um, but we do have that opening out on our website, so hopefully we can get some good candidates for that position. That's all I have. Thanks.
Mrs. Armstrong?
I'd like to welcome Rhonda and look forward to working with her. Um, that means though that my time here will be limited. I, I will be working. For the near future and working with Rhonda and bringing her, training her along and working to complete the budget. I will be wer- working remotely, though, um. I will be in the office till the end of the month, and then after that, I will probably return if we have budget items on the agenda. So if anybody needs to contact me, use email or phone, I'll be around for a while. Hopefully, we'll let you know. Once I'm terminated, but if not, I'll just say goodbye to everybody.
Well, thank you for your service and thank you for all your hard work on the budget last year and everything else you do. It's been, it's been a pleasure.
Make sure you take Ms. Dunn to K and M for lunch tomorrow for her first day.
We already took her once.
Oh, she's already been there, okay. That's that's like a rite of passage when you get hired in Spring. Oh, you can check that out too.
Uh, Mrs. Jones?
The only update that I have to give you guys is our EAP plan to go with Empathia. For the new plan year for benefits has not panned out due to some, um. Inability to come to agreement on the contract terms that were provided, so. I have been working diligently with CBiz to find another provider, so we are working in hope to have that. Presented and ready to go shortly. I just wanted to let you guys know that when you see that, it'll be a completely different name, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Messer?
Couple of things. We did roll back to pool hours. We're not open as as long. There is a reason for that. We've worked our lifeguards into the ground. Uh, we started out with thirty nine, we're down to thirty five, and they're all maxing out on hours and we were concerned. Uh, that we were gonna lose more, so we went from eight to six thirty. Um, we had the ones that, the younger ones that were supposed to not exceed forty were running thirty nine. And the ones that were allowed to do forty were over forty and fifty and such, and we, uh. We felt it was the only way to, uh, stop the drain of people because they were flat saying, you've worked us into the ground, so. It's one of those labor markets that's killing us. We wanted fifty, never got fifty, but we got enough to open. Uh, next week's gonna be very difficult because the heat is gonna be so extreme, it's gonna be brutal. They're calling for over a hundred most of the week.
Triple digits.
Uh, QuickTrip, uh, as far as the city's part, the lift station was accepted yesterday. As far as the final inspection, everything we went through and trained on it, all the equipment. Um, I know it's a little bit confusing, QuickTrip. It's it's located at QuickTrip and we call it the QuickTrip Lift Station. But it's actually nothing to do with them. We just use that term, so it's easy to find. It's like, where you gotta go, go to QT Lift Station. But actually, uh, it was a little bit. Of a challenge, the generator was put in, it's good to go. We'll be working, like I said earlier, we're gonna be working Lincoln this week. Uh, we need, we're gonna cancel the park. Board meeting for Monday. I do not have a quorum. We're still struggling with just three peoples who can beat the bushes. And find another member for the park board, it sure would help us. Uh, another thing we added, uh, over the last month. Three, at least three miles of road that we're gonna be responsible for, uh, between Dayton Creek and Foxwood and. Uh, Oakwoods, the roads that are being paved, we're about ready to add another three miles, not lane miles, three miles. So we are growing in responsibility as well. That's pretty much, unless you have specific questions, that's pretty much it.
No, and I think just speaking about the pool, I don't think any of us, especially as. No, and I think just speaking about the pool, I don't think any of us, especially as a city wanted us to, you know, change the pool's hours and close early, but just, we don't, we don't wanna lose those lifeguards. And I spoke to several, quite a few parents, actually, of lifeguards and they just said their kids were getting worn out. And we don't, we don't wanna lose them. So, but we wanna still be able to have, keep the pool open and so that was, seemed like the best alternative was to cut a couple hours back, but still allow for, allow for it to be open every day and.
It's a common phenomenon for public pools this time of year.
Yeah, and once again.
Staffs, they attrition from throughout the season.
Well, and once again, this is, there's, there's some communities that have had to close multiple days and not even be open at all, so we're, we're privileged that we've been able to stay open, you know, other than weather a few times and a couple, couple times, but other than that.
We're doing pretty good in the circumstances.
Yeah.
I think some of them, I've heard of closing permanently because of lifeguard shortage. We also, one of the things that we have seen an increase in is the walkers, pool walkers, and I think it's, we had eighteen this morning, so it's a, it's a growing trend, so.
I had a couple of questions.
Oh, sorry, oh, I was just gonna say, it's nice to have everything open at the pool this year. I've seen a lot of kids really enjoying the, the slide down the hill and everything that hasn't been open for quite a few years. So it was nice, you know, with my four kids being there a few times and then being able to enjoy everything. So that's been a huge blessing. Mr. Young?
Yeah, so on the pool, the only question I had that I've gotten feedback on is, I know that we decreased the hours down to six-thirty, was that based off of the lifeguard feedback, or was that just the way you went, rather than opening later and being open till eight for the folks that maybe can't get there during the day?
It was totally about lifeguards and about the, the struggle we had. Now, it didn't shut everything down, I think we have a few people walking, but we just tried to cut back the number to be able to cut their hours back 'cause they're just being overworked.
No, no, that's what I was, I, I, I just noticed at the time was, you know, we cut the time back from eight to six-thirty or whatnot, instead of opening later in the morning. I didn't know if that was a feedback from the lifeguards or if that was, you know, what that was, but I'm fine with it either way, I know it's tough, I just, that was, I had a bunch of questions from that, from citizens, I just wanted to make sure I asked.
Yeah, it was actually from, I'm sorry. It was actually from a meeting with the managers and the, some of, and, and feedback from the, the lifeguards themselves. It was, that was the reason we went with that decision, that was, felt it was easiest for the kids.
That's, that was probably, that was my assumption, but I just wanted to make sure. I figured if we're gonna lose more if we wanted to stay open later, rather than open later. My other question is, I've, I've had a lot of people ask about the Lone Elm Street, there's a, it's turning into kinda what the Woodland looks like. And I, I mean, I had probably twenty-five people ask me that they put in, you know, on the survey online. What, at what point do we put that on the list? When they do those surveys, just so they don't feel like they're being ignored? I know there's a lot of stuff that's being asked about, but when there is ones that are really bad like that, how do we kind of prioritize the areas that get addressed?
What we've been working on right now are three hottest areas that, that seem like we're running back and forth, was Victory. And we've made some progress there, then we jump to Woodland and we've made some progress there, although we're still trying to resolve the maintenance agreement on that. And then Friday and this week, we worked on Woodland. Woodland needs a, a lot of long-term help, it needs a mill and overlay. We're talking some serious funding. And we'll probably address that when we get to the CIP, but that road was never, was not done to the standard it should have been done. I mean, it's, it's laid right on solid rock, it's, and it's a difficult, ongoing maintenance issue. The repairs we did, I expect to last one month and we'll be right back out there. It's, it's just a difficult spot right now to repair. It needs a contract with some large, and with some cash to, or some funding to do something about it. You're talking maybe a million dollars out there all total to bring that road up, so that's not something we can do. We're, we're doing our best to keep ahead of it, but it's just gonna keep breaking out because it was never properly put in. To properly put that in, it should have been milled down or dug down at least eight or ten inches, probably two feet, brought back base back, but it wasn't done. And it was just one of these old county roads, you just keep putting more asphalt, more asphalt. But it does need to be engineered and milled out and eight to ten inches of asphalt put in there to handle the loads that are on it. But we're trying to keep up with it, but it's difficult. But it was the last of the three priorities and now number four is Lincoln Street, so we keep revolving between them with the crew we got.
Okay, yeah, I still, I didn't, I didn't have an answer for them when it, when they asked how it gets put on the priority list, is that? I'd assume just keep, you know, submitting your surveys and at some point, you know, when there's enough traction there, you know, the greasy, or the squeaky wheel gets the grease, right, so. The last thing I had was, I lost it. Sorry, I'm still a little out of it. I had, I thought I had it written down, but I don't see it here. That's it. I'll leave you alone.
All right, with that, that'll end the announcements and reports. And next, we'll move on to executive session. And looks like we need ten minutes in the first one. So I entertain a motion on that first executive session.
I move the city council recess into an executive session for ten minutes to receive advice of council regarding litigation pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception of KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two of the Kansas Open Meeting Act. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at nine thirty-five.
Give us three minutes to get there?
Yeah. I can get water that quick.
Right.
Does that work, nine thirty-five then?
Yeah, that's, let's do that.
No formal action is anticipated following the session. Persons to meet attendants are the following, F. Charles Dunley, City Attorney, and Patrick Burton, well. I guess that's it.
Second.
We got a motion and second, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Motion carries five zero zero, yes ma'am.
Who was the second?
Me. Right.
And did you state that Mr. Burton was attending?
I was about to, but then I held off, he's not here.
Okay, he's not attending, okay, thank you. I just wanted to, bye.
Thank you, guys.
All right, guys, welcome back. Let the record reflect that the governing body reconvened to open meeting at 9:35 PM. No votes were taken or decisions made during the executive session. The discussion was limited to the subject stated. Next, we'll move into the next executive session, and I believe we need 20 minutes for this one, and whoever wants to make that motion.
I move the city council. I move the city council recess into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss contract negotiations of potential employment pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception KSA 754319B1 of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers at 9:51 PM. No formal action is anticipated following the session. Persons to be in attendance are the following. F. Charles Dunley, City Attorney, and Mona Keisha Jones, Human Resources Director.
Second.
Got a motion second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries 4-0-0. Welcome back, guys. We did have a request to go ahead and extend that second executive session another five minutes. So if somebody wants to do that motion.
I make a motion.
I make a motion to extend the executive session for an additional five minutes to be completed at 9:57.
Sounds good. Got a motion second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0-0.
Off to the races.
You didn't have to go all the way back there. You could've just hovered right there.
I know, it's like I should just sit over there.
Yeah, don't hit your head either.
I know.
It's really big space for me.
I hope so. Because we had, we've run through a couple before, so I would be very nervous to be in front of this.
The Ford's got.
Not, not be person that they were.
It's kind of dumb when they write the contracts like that. They're buying him out. Now, one, they're paying for it for three years, and he.
They wanted rid of him, and that's what the contract said, and he, he got his money. He's getting his money. And the other one had a deal, he made it six months or something. Anyway, he ended up leaving short of his six months and then got another six months of pay. So we, we were paying three city managers. The current one, they have.
Is he a woman?
No.
Is he the woman?
Huh?
You just said, is he the woman?
Yeah.
No, I said, is it a woman?
Oh. No, it is. That probably better. Well, no, his name's Kelly. He's from, around about.
Maybe that's why I thought he was a woman, Kelly.
Yeah.
That's why I thought it was a woman.
And I don't think he's not, I'm telling him, I think he's had to deal with tough commissioners.
Oh, I see. Ford's got, took a left turn on a couple of those.
Oh, Lord.
And then contract that paid for three years on, he signed it, what, under two layers?
They renewed the contract, and he, he's a very good friend of mine. He was my boss. Nobody's perfect, but he, they renewed his contract. When the two of those commissioners were wanting rid of him.
What time are you going down?
And they renewed his contract for three years with a buyout.
For first thing.
And sixty days later or something, they were negotiating about the door, and I was like, people don't leave.
I mean, he's talking about two years.
He does. He does.
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know.
Good job, you get it. Good job, you get it. Good job, you get it. Good job, you get it.
And a hundred and eight thousand dollars a year, plus your benefits. And a hundred and eight thousand dollars a year, plus your benefits. And a hundred and eight thousand dollars a year, plus your benefits. And a hundred and eight thousand dollars a year, plus your benefits. It's fine up for that.
And then they turned around and did it again. And then they turned around and did it again. And then they turned around and did it again. And then they turned around and did it again.
Yeah. 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 For more money. I mean, their big thing is only makes too much money. He makes too much money. For more money. I mean, their big thing is only makes too much money. He makes too much money. For more money. I mean, their big thing is only makes too much money. He makes too much money. For more money. I mean, their big thing is only makes too much money. He makes too much money. And so they replaced him with a guy they paid more, and hired a finance director. They paid more. And so they replaced him with a guy they paid more, and hired a finance director. They paid more. And so they replaced him with a guy they paid more, and hired a finance director. They paid more. And so they replaced him with a guy they paid more, and hired a finance director. They paid more. Because it doesn't make any sense. Trying to cut its cost, you're doing it at the wrong end of the program here. Because it doesn't make any sense. Trying to cut its cost, you're doing it at the wrong end of the program here. Because it doesn't make any sense. Trying to cut its cost, you're doing it at the wrong end of the program here. Because it doesn't make any sense. Trying to cut its cost, you're doing it at the wrong end of the program here. But, yeah, the one guy who I had a lot of looks for. But, yeah, the one guy who I had a lot of looks for. But, yeah, the one guy who I had a lot of looks for. But, yeah, the one guy who I had a lot of looks for. By the way, he had a drug problem, so he was so erratic and unusual. I was like, I've been meaning to ask Monica, she said, please tell me this is not the guy you're. By the way, he had a drug problem, so he was so erratic and unusual. I was like, I've been meaning to ask Monica, she said, please tell me this is not the guy you're. By the way, he had a drug problem, so he was so erratic and unusual. I was like, I've been meaning to ask Monica, she said, please tell me this is not the guy you're. By the way, he had a drug problem, so he was so erratic and unusual. I was like, I've been meaning to ask Monica, she said, please tell me this is not the guy you're. Is that right? Is that right? Is that right? Is that right?
No, our ass won't believe it. No, our ass won't believe it. No, our ass won't believe it. No, our ass won't believe it.
He's what?
He's what? He's what? He's what?
Yeah, the second guy they had, who they bought out, I thought a lot of him. Yeah, the second guy they had, who they bought out, I thought a lot of him. Yeah, the second guy they had, who they bought out, I thought a lot of him. Yeah, the second guy they had, who they bought out, I thought a lot of him. But he was very erratic, very unusual. 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 He canceled a employee pool party cookout for all employees fifteen minutes before it started. He canceled a employee pool party cookout for all employees fifteen minutes before it started. He canceled a employee pool party cookout for all employees fifteen minutes before it started. He canceled a employee pool party cookout for all employees fifteen minutes before it started. Firemen there with the grill fired up, lifeguards on duty, employees showing up, and he said, cancel this party. Firemen there with the grill fired up, lifeguards on duty, employees showing up, and he said, cancel this party. Firemen there with the grill fired up, lifeguards on duty, employees showing up, and he said, cancel this party. Firemen there with the grill fired up, lifeguards on duty, employees showing up, and he said, cancel this party. Did he have good cause? 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 I'm busy at City Hall. I'm busy at City Hall. I'm busy at City Hall. I'm busy at City Hall.
We all are. We all are. We all are. We all are.
He returned his call, so the fire chief's calling, and the police chief, they're like, hey, hey, how do we fix this? He returned his call, so the fire chief's calling, and the police chief, they're like, hey, hey, how do we fix this? He returned his call, so the fire chief's calling, and the police chief, they're like, hey, hey, how do we fix this? He returned his call, so the fire chief's calling, and the police chief, they're like, hey, hey, how do we fix this? And he wouldn't return calls, so the fire chief's last call was, we're going on with this? And he wouldn't return calls, so the fire chief's last call was, we're going on with this? And he wouldn't return calls, so the fire chief's last call was, we're going on with this? And he wouldn't return calls, so the fire chief's last call was, we're going on with this? The food's here, the grill's here, the people are here. I'm cooking hamburgers. I hope we see you. The food's here, the grill's here, the people are here. I'm cooking hamburgers. I hope we see you. The food's here, the grill's here, the people are here. I'm cooking hamburgers. I hope we see you. The food's here, the grill's here, the people are here. I'm cooking hamburgers. I hope we see you. And never ever. And never ever. And never ever. And never ever. And so that was the kind of stuff, and I was like, I don't know what happened there, because I didn't work there, but. And so that was the kind of stuff, and I was like, I don't know what happened there, because I didn't work there, but. And so that was the kind of stuff, and I was like, I don't know what happened there, because I didn't work there, but. And so that was the kind of stuff, and I was like, I don't know what happened there, because I didn't work there, but.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
That's no way to manage a team, that's for sure. That's no way to manage a team, that's for sure. That's no way to manage a team, that's for sure. That's no way to manage a team, that's for sure.
Well, they have one more executive session every once. Well, they have one more executive session every once. Well, they have one more executive session every once. Well, they have one more executive session every once.
They do? They do? They do? They do?
Yep, they have three. Yep, they have three. Yep, they have three. Yep, they have three.
So they have one tonight. So they have one tonight. So they have one tonight. So they have one tonight.
Should we, did we tell them to see if they go home? Should we, did we tell them to see if they go home? Should we, did we tell them to see if they go home? Should we, did we tell them to see if they go home? That loop, then, because he's still out there. That loop, then, because he's still out there. That loop, then, because he's still out there. That loop, then, because he's still out there.
Oh, I don't know, he might be staying, maybe he doesn't like this. Oh, I don't know, he might be staying, maybe he doesn't like this. Oh, I don't know, he might be staying, maybe he doesn't like this. Oh, I don't know, he might be staying, maybe he doesn't like this.
As long as the doors are already. As long as the doors are already. As long as the doors are already. As long as the doors are already.
Yeah, ask him to lock the doors if you don't mind. Yeah, ask him to lock the doors if you don't mind. Yeah, ask him to lock the doors if you don't mind. Yeah, ask him to lock the doors if you don't mind. Because I don't know, they have a double tap. Because I don't know, they have a double tap. Because I don't know, they have a double tap. Because I don't know, they have a double tap.
Do you guys ever check the door at night? Do you guys ever check the door at night? Do you guys ever check the door at night? Do you guys ever check the door at night?
Um, I mean, not specifically. I mean, we don't have like a. Um, I mean, not specifically. I mean, we don't have like a. Um, I mean, not specifically. I mean, we don't have like a. Um, I mean, not specifically. I mean, we don't have like a.
I guess. I guess. I guess. I guess.
Practice, practice, it says you must check. Practice, practice, it says you must check. Practice, practice, it says you must check. Practice, practice, it says you must check.
They need to work on it, because they're not closing it down, but they're not locking. They need to work on it, because they're not closing it down, but they're not locking. They need to work on it, because they're not closing it down, but they're not locking. They need to work on it, because they're not closing it down, but they're not locking. I don't want somebody, they're gonna climb the fence, they climb the fence, but I don't want walking through the gate. I don't want somebody, they're gonna climb the fence, they climb the fence, but I don't want walking through the gate. I don't want somebody, they're gonna climb the fence, they climb the fence, but I don't want walking through the gate. I don't want somebody, they're gonna climb the fence, they climb the fence, but I don't want walking through the gate. Somebody telling me three times. Somebody telling me three times. Somebody telling me three times. Somebody telling me three times.
Don't you have a night manager that should be responsible for that? Don't you have a night manager that should be responsible for that? Don't you have a night manager that should be responsible for that? Don't you have a night manager that should be responsible for that?
I, I just found out. I have failed into it, but, no, I don't want it. I, I just found out. I have failed into it, but, no, I don't want it. I, I just found out. I have failed into it, but, no, I don't want it. I, I just found out. I have failed into it, but, no, I don't want it.
I may have to send something out, ask them to do their patrols. I may have to send something out, ask them to do their patrols. I may have to send something out, ask them to do their patrols. I may have to send something out, ask them to do their patrols.
Well, I'm just thinking, if we drive through the parking lot, anyone walk over that gate, shake it, would hurt my feelings. Well, I'm just thinking, if we drive through the parking lot, anyone walk over that gate, shake it, would hurt my feelings. Well, I'm just thinking, if we drive through the parking lot, anyone walk over that gate, shake it, would hurt my feelings. Well, I'm just thinking, if we drive through the parking lot, anyone walk over that gate, shake it, would hurt my feelings.
I consider that. I consider that. I consider that. I consider that. Remember that, when you get in the middle of the night calls. Remember that, when you get in the middle of the night calls. Remember that, when you get in the middle of the night calls. Remember that, when you get in the middle of the night calls.
Well, it wouldn't take very many, and maybe, well, I probably would like. Well, it wouldn't take very many, and maybe, well, I probably would like. Well, it wouldn't take very many, and maybe, well, I probably would like. Well, it wouldn't take very many, and maybe, well, I probably would like.
Yeah, probably wouldn't take very many late night calls that they help you. Yeah, probably wouldn't take very many late night calls that they help you. Yeah, probably wouldn't take very many late night calls that they help you. Yeah, probably wouldn't take very many late night calls that they help you. What were their locks on? What were their locks on? What were their locks on? What were their locks on?
Pardon? 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 Pardon?
Just a chain lock. Just a chain lock. Just a chain lock. Just a chain lock. Chain lock with a master lock? Chain lock with a master lock? Chain lock with a master lock? Chain lock with a master lock?
What's got a master lock on it? What's got a master lock on it? What's got a master lock on it? What's got a master lock on it?
I'm asking what type of lock it is. I'm asking what type of lock it is. I'm asking what type of lock it is. I'm asking what type of lock it is.
Oh. 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 Oh.
Just a chain lock with a. Just a chain lock with a. Just a chain lock with a. Just a chain lock with a.
No, it's a, it's a hole, it's just one lock. No, it's a, it's a hole, it's just one lock. No, it's a, it's a hole, it's just one lock. No, it's a, it's a hole, it's just one lock.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
All right, welcome back, everybody. 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 Let the record reflect, the governing body reconvened to open meeting at nine fifty-eight PM. Let the record reflect, the governing body reconvened to open meeting at nine fifty-eight PM. Let the record reflect, the governing body reconvened to open meeting at nine fifty-eight PM. Let the record reflect, the governing body reconvened to open meeting at nine fifty-eight PM. No votes were taken or decisions made during executive session. The discussion was limited to the subjects stated. No votes were taken or decisions made during executive session. The discussion was limited to the subjects stated. No votes were taken or decisions made during executive session. The discussion was limited to the subjects stated. No votes were taken or decisions made during executive session. The discussion was limited to the subjects stated. And then I entertain a motion to go to the next executive session. Looks like we need fifteen minutes on that one. And then I entertain a motion to go to the next executive session. Looks like we need fifteen minutes on that one. And then I entertain a motion to go to the next executive session. Looks like we need fifteen minutes on that one. And then I entertain a motion to go to the next executive session. Looks like we need fifteen minutes on that one.
I know the City Council recessed into executive session for fifteen minutes to receive advice of council regarding administrative action and litigation pursuant to the attorney-client privilege, I know the City Council recessed into executive session for fifteen minutes to receive advice of council regarding administrative action and litigation pursuant to the attorney-client privilege, I know the City Council recessed into executive session for fifteen minutes to receive advice of council regarding administrative action and litigation pursuant to the attorney-client privilege, I know the City Council recessed into executive session for fifteen minutes to receive advice of council regarding administrative action and litigation pursuant to the attorney-client privilege, exception of KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. exception of KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. exception of KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. exception of KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two of the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The open meeting will resume in the City Council chambers at ten fifteen PM. The open meeting will resume in the City Council chambers at ten fifteen PM. The open meeting will resume in the City Council chambers at ten fifteen PM. The open meeting will resume in the City Council chambers at ten fifteen PM. No formal action is anticipated following the session. Persons to be in attendance are the following. F. Charles Dunley, City Attorney. No formal action is anticipated following the session. Persons to be in attendance are the following. F. Charles Dunley, City Attorney. No formal action is anticipated following the session. Persons to be in attendance are the following. F. Charles Dunley, City Attorney. No formal action is anticipated following the session. Persons to be in attendance are the following. F. Charles Dunley, City Attorney.
Second. 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 Second.
Got a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor? Got a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor? Got a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor? Got a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye. 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 Aye.
Motion carries four zero zero. Motion carries four zero zero. Motion carries four zero zero. Motion carries four zero zero.